Oh, boy. I might need some. What is it that you want to read?
We have to be quick, I mean, the other president of the chair.
Um, what's this name?
We're ready.
Okay. I gotta call this meeting together, eh? Calling the meeting together, uh, of the Glendale Historic Preservation Commission on Monday, September the 21st, 2009. You get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Mardian.
Here.
Commissioner Amerian.
Here.
Commissioner Stepanian.
Here.
Commissioner Landrigan. And Chair Adrian.
Here. Report regarding posting of agenda. The agenda for this meeting was posted on or before Tuesday, July 21st, 2009, on a bulletin board outside City Hall.
I think, uh, so, Chair, are you reading the minutes?
Oh, sorry about that. Approval of the minutes.
I have read.
Do I have any motion?
I have read.
Or comments?
I don't have any comments, and if anybody else has, that's fine. If not, I would move to approve it.
Do I have a second?
A second. Approval of the minutes.
Have a first and second. May I have a vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Mardian.
Yes.
Commissioner Amerian.
Yes.
Commissioner Stepanian.
Yes.
And Chair Adrian.
I think I have to abstain, don't I?
Yes.
If you weren't here, yeah. I have to abstain. Good. Okay. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. The commission may question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decisions. We already?
Read this, does which one is?
I'm gonna read this first, right?
Ah, okay. Of course, not this one, I see which one.
Okay. Uh, do we wanna go with the?
Uh, you have to see if anyone's here for old, for, uh?
Anyone here wish to speak on, under oral communications? Okay. Richard Espinito? Is that correct?
Esperito.
Esperito.
Good evening, or good afternoon, members of the, uh, commission, staff. I am Richard Esperito. Um, the people here this afternoon are people who reside at Ivy Glen, which is a public housing project, and there is also facility on that property called The Goody House, which is a historical facility. Um, I'm gonna be leaving the members of the commission and people here, staff, uh, some documents. Um, we're not here to talk about the noncompliance of ADA, the noncompliance of Title 24, sexual harassment, but we are gonna be talking about The Goody House. How many of you folks have a wooden house, members of the commission? These are termites that have been picked up at The Goody House, and I also have a report that we're gonna be sending to, giving out to the members of the commission and staff from HUD, saying there is an infestation at The Goody House and also at the residency where the people who are with disabilities, wheelchairs and what have you. Now, a long time ago, I made a presentation at the city council regarding people with disabilities having animals, their service animals and companion animals. As of this morning, I checked the website, termites are not considered service animals or companion animals by ADA, and if you have termites residing in your house or your residencies over there, um, this has to be resolved. The report that I'm gonna be giving you today is a report that was done by HUD in March of 2009. We have a different time period now, but we've got a situation that we have to take care of. With that, I would like the Historic Preservation Committee, because The Goody House is part of the historic property here in the city of Glendale, to find out why there are termite infestation at The Goody House as well as the residence, but that isn't your major concern. Your concern is property that is of historical significance within the city of Glendale, and that is an issue that we, the residents, I am not a resident, and unfortunately, I do speak for the residents today regarding that issue, and I hope, um, the staff and the members of this commission will instruct the city to look into this matter, because it is something of importance to the city as a historical facility, but it is also a danger for the people who reside, not in The Goody House, because that's just a kinda like a community robe, uh, community gathering place, but it's also in the residence of, where 23 people, there are 23 residences, 22 of them are for people with disabilities, and unfortunately, we're putting in danger people with disabilities, because somebody doesn't wanna act on it. I'm giving seven copies, one for each member of the commission, and for staff and for the legal department, so we're all on the same page, okay? I don't wanna sit here and shoot off my mouth without giving you the documentation. There is also some other interesting things here that you may be interested in. This is from the Federal Registry, uh, because the management company, Ability First, has been very upset with the residents in establishing a society or an organization, and also, we're providing you with something that may not be very interesting, uh, but it's published by the Department of Justice and HUD on the rights for people with disabilities. I don't know if it means anything, but, you know, who cares? It's only the federal government. So, I don't know who to give this to, and I-
Did you hand it over to?
I can have them.
Ida? Children's-
And I really wish this commission would take this seriously, because this is something of importance. Does anybody want these?
Want these, huh?
You don't wanna take 'em?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
For your presentation. Do we open for discussion? Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on, uh, oral communications this time? Okay. So we'll close that. Do I have any, any comments from the commissioners?
We'll have to start. Come on. Uh, staff will definitely look into that issue. The Good House is one of our oldest landmark houses in the city. Obviously, woodhouses often suffer from termite infestation, and we definitely take that seriously, so we'll, uh, work with the other departments in the city to find out what, uh, what can be done, first to check the report and then see what we can do, and we can report back at the next hearing for the HPC, but we'll also can stay in touch with the communities to let you know sooner what's happening, so.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Jay. Uh, next item is old business. Do we have any old business?
I don't have any.
Commissioners?
No.
Oh, least not.
We'll move on to new business. And I'll turn the program over to Jay, members of staff.
Start our busy program for the day. Uh, the first of our four Glendale Register nominations that we'll be hearing today. Item 6A is 1441 Andinis Drive in the Verdugo Woodlands neighborhood. Um, just to give you a sense of where we are, we're up on the hillside area of the Woodlands. There are some of the lower areas are more, uh, flat topography, and then we come up on the hillside areas, uh, where 1441 Andinis is located. Um, here's the house. Obviously, it's Spanish colonial revival house. It was built in 1933. Um, I'll point out, and there was no addition made to the house, but if you see the windows under that upper floor balcony, um, there was some additional space added in that under floor area in 1936 to create a lower floor, and we're not sure if those window openings were there in the original construction, or if they dated to the later, um, addition of interior space at that level. Um, you can see it has a lot of the character-defining features of Spanish colonial revival, the smooth stucco walls, the red tile cladded, cladding on the roof, and this gives you a sense of the progression up from the street. So, what we're looking at in that first photo is, is really the side facade of the house, and as you come up, some entry stairs that are located to the right of the garage, uh, you gradually come up the hill until you come to a terrace level. Here, we're looking up at the front entry porch, and then we're, in the right-hand photo, we're up on that entry terrace level, looking at the final, uh, final flight of stairs that goes up to the front door. Um, you can see it has the original wood front door with, uh, with metal elements, and then the wood, fairly simple wood detailing around the front porch. One of the most interesting architectural features on the house is this parabolic picture window, um, set kind of in a beveled opening at the terrace level. The house is really oriented toward the views across the canyon, and that's why it has the kind of street orientation where you're really looking at the side of the house when you come up to it from the street. Here's another view of the parabolic window. The water feature below, we're not sure if that's original or dates to some work that was done, uh, with the repaving of that terrace and some of the ironwork up there, but the house does have a lot of its other original features, including, uh, most of its original wood windows. Um, here's a view up, looking at that, uh, kind of decorative balconet on that side facade that does face the street, that gives it a little more architectural pizzazz, and then the garage has an interesting kind of roof form to it, which is kind of like an East Coast saltbox almost, which we don't see too often here. Uh, the garage door's not original, but the rest of the garage appears to be in its original configuration with its original materials. Um, there have been a couple of alterations made. At the upper photo, there's a, uh, kind of an enclosed porch that was built over the location of a former terrace that was open to the sky, and then on the side of the house that you don't really see from the street, or certainly from those, the front terrace area, is kind of a service walkway that, uh, kind of a nicely detailed wood roof was put over, um, and just to shelter that area. Um, at staff level, as I was reviewing this house, I was thinking very hard about how, how the various properties that we look at for the Glendale Register meet the seven criteria that we have, and usually, the houses that we look at meet the architectural criterion, uh, criterion D, um, but I wanted to go through all of the criteria to indicate why, at staff level, I felt that this house does not meet the criteria for designation, even though it's a very lovely house. Um, it certainly has very interesting work on the inside, and the original owners worked with a builder who was known for his hardwood construction, and I think a lot of the effort on this house did go to the interior, where there's some beautiful flooring and beautiful woodwork, um, but some of that level of detail, um, didn't come out, in my opinion, to the exterior of the house. But if we look at the seven criteria, um, a property only needs to meet one of these, as you know. Uh, the first would be, uh, property that identifies interest or value as part of the heritage of the city. That's usually not a single-family home. It's usually a site, for example, like the, uh, the, uh, Train Depot, or something that truly explains how Glendale grew, how Glendale came to be what it is today, usually not a single-family home. Location of a significant historic event. This is the sort of thing we hope that as people give us their nominations and the historic reports that usually come with the nominations, we sometimes find out interesting and often surprising things about properties that obviously you can't tell from the street just looking at it. Um, in the case of 1441 Andinis, we didn't have any significant events associated with the site, or any of the people, the owners or the people who were involved with the site, um, being important enough to get designated under this criterion. Criterion D, as you know, has two parts, um, and I carefully considered both of these coming up with my staff assessment. Um, the first part is that the property is one of the best remaining architectural types in a neighborhood. Um, I took a drive through what we've identified as the Verdugo Woodlands neighborhood on the Neighborhood Services map, and while the density of Spanish colonial revival isn't as high in this neighborhoods, this neighborhood as it is in Rossmoyn or some other areas, um, there are still a number of homes in this style that I felt really did display some of the character-defining features and the sense of design and detail that we're looking for, um, so we couldn't say that this was one of the best in the neighborhood, and at the same time, looking at the second part of this, I didn't see that it had many of those character-defining details that we usually look for on our nominated properties. Uh, the fifth criterion is that a property's a unique location or a physical characteristic that's kind of an established visual feature of a neighborhood. Um, if you remember the Castle House on Mountain Street that we, uh, or we designated recently, um, because of that property's location, it's sitting on the hill, and it's kind of visibility from the neighborhood that really jumped out at us as meeting this criterion, and the current house doesn't do that. Um, the site is a potential archaeological interest. We have no identification of any archaeological features there, and then finally, that the property contains a natural setting that benefits the well-being of the city, um, that's usually kind of more of an open park-like area than we'd have in single-family homes to meet that criterion. So, the staff report indicates that we didn't think that this met the criteria for designation, and I'll be interested to hear the commission's discussion. Uh, one of the owners, Kurt Christensen, is also here to, uh, discuss the property.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Jay. See, I do have a card from someone wishes to speak, uh, Mr. Michael Murray? Correct?
Um, let, let the owner go first.
All right. Please come forward, state your name and your address for us.
Kurt Christensen, uh, 1441 Andinis Drive, Glendale, California. Uh, commission members of staff and the audience, uh, first of all, I'd like to, to, uh, thank you for taking your time out of your busy day to be with us today. Um, I understand completely, uh, your position and, as being a community development director for a neighboring city who staffs this commission in my local city, uh, I understand the importance and the seriousness of this, this topic. Um, we moved a couple of years ago, two years ago, from Pasadena, looking for a house that was, uh, of a architectural significance, uh, something that was not new, but something that was old, that kind of told the past, um, a story of the past, uh, the city that we lived, uh, we live in, or living in. Um, the Pasadena where we came from, we had a post-and-beam modern house, uh, from the early 1960s. Uh, it was a little too small for us. We decided to look for something bigger. Um, uh, one of the next speakers that will be speaking on our behalf, Mr. Murray, purchased a house in the Verdugo Woodlands. Uh, we were over in that area, and told our real estate agent that this would be an area that we would be interested in moving to. Um, the house is beautiful, from the inside and the outside, and yes, I would agree, um, that the architectural detail on the outside of the house is maybe not as grand as some of the other houses in the neighborhood, but I would contend that, that this house was built, uh, coming out of the Depression. People that, uh, originally built this house were immigrants, uh, that came in, uh, were looking to relocate into the Glendale area, and they spent a little bit more money on the interior than they probably did on the exterior. Um, just from being inside the house and up and down the stairs, uh, on the interior, um, I, I believe that the downstairs bedroom was always contemplated to be there. I, I'm guessing that they probably ran out of money or didn't have enough money to complete it until a few years later, um, but all of the bones that are originally there, um, the room, uh, the stairway in and out, were all original, as we can tell from the, uh, the, uh, concrete that was poured in tie, inside for the stairway. Um, as far as criterion A, uh, the proposed resource or district identified interest or value as part of the city's heritage, uh, this is one of the original subdivisions in, in, uh, in the, uh, Glendale area. Uh, one of those subdivisions that were individual lots were sold off. Um, uh, the subdivision was originally, matter of fact, the house across the street from us was one of the first houses that was built. Um, and I think that, that it shows you that the period of time when this house, um, was constructed, the houses in this neighborhood were constructed, um, that is important. It shows, uh, a small number of houses being built, uh, before the stock market crashed, very few being built, uh, during that period of time of the Depression, and then, uh, 1933, as we're starting to move out of the Depression, um, you'll see more houses built. So I think this is a, is a significant part of the history of Glendale, to show, you know, what happened in the residential markets, uh, in, in the area. Um, you know, as I said, it's not, is not, maybe not one of the best examples of, of architecture of this style, but given the timeframe that it was built, uh, I believe it probably was one of, uh, a classic house that was built, uh, during that period of time. Um, on criteria E, the proposed resource is in a unique location or contains a singular, singular physical characteristic representing an established and familiar visible, visual feature of the neighborhood. And there are houses that are on upslope lots. However, this house not only is an upslope lot, it's built on top of a ridge. Um, it, it wasn't built like most of the other houses in, in this neighborhood where either at street level or going up the house, uh, up the side of that hill a little bit. This house is built on top of, of that ridge, and in one of the promotional brochures that, that was originally adopted, uh, and, and sent out for, um, the Verdugo Woodlands, um, the, there's a picture of, of a family sitting on a front step, looking out over, uh, towards the, the eastern side of that, that valley area. Um, this, this porch could be our porch, uh, because the house is built up without the trees that were, have grown in over the time. This would be the view that you would see of those mountains, and that's why the house was faced towards that eastern side, to, uh, take advantage of, of the views off that house. As you drive down Andinis, uh, you'll also notice that this house is imposing. Uh, it's, it's much, uh, it's smaller than what it appears, um, and from a street level, as you look up, it, it could even look to be three stories in height. Uh, the garage is detached, there's a, a patio area that's between the garage and the, and the bottom of the house. But it is a, a structure that is commanding in that neighborhood, and as you drive down that block, um, it's one of the houses that you really recognize or see from the street and, and as a landmark in that neighborhood. You know, as a, as a resident of this community and understanding historic preservation, I've had classes in historic preservation, I've, I've, uh, a member of the Glendale Heritage Society, Pasadena Heritage, National Trust and, and, and LA Conservancy, um, I understand the importance of preserving what we have, um, whether it be the grand, uh, architectural styles within a, in a community, or the, the more modest, uh, architectural styles within that community. Um, you know, speaking with friends that are on the East Coast or even in the Midwest, uh, when they talk about historic preservation in, in California and specifically Los Angeles, they kind of laugh, because they, they feel there is no historic preservation in Los Angeles. Um, I guess my feeling is, is that it's, it needs to start with, with one, one house in a neighborhood. Uh, this house, in conjunction with all the other houses in this neighborhood, would make an outstanding, uh, historic, uh, district, uh, for the Woodlands. Um, but in order for the, get that momentum, um, you probably would, would want to have a few houses that are registered, uh, within that neighborhood, to be able to spread the word and tell the importance of the preservation of this, this really important subdivision. Uh, if you drove by my residence, uh, if you were looking to the right, uh, or to the north as you looked at my house, if you looked, uh, to the south of that, you can see some examples of what's happened to some of the houses, um, that were part of this original subdivision, uh, that were, were built, uh, or re, uh, rehabbed, or even torn down for that matter, uh, and built something that wasn't compatible with the neighborhood and the style that it should be. And I would hope that, that by, um, by giving this a historic status and by, uh, moving forward with that process, that we could convince other neighbors in our, uh, neighborhood to consider the designation either on their own or as a district. Yeah, I think that's the only way that we're gonna be able to preserve our past, and I, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. And now, I think Mr. Murray would like to speak. And I believe we have a time limitation on these speakers.
At your discretion, you can give three or five minutes.
Yeah.
For, for the speakers after the others.
I'll be brief.
All right. We have, we have a busy schedule, that's why we-
No, thank you. Uh, thank you for hearing, uh, today. Uh, my name's Michael Murray. Um, I'm a neighbor, I live in Verdugo Woodlands. Um, I live in the Rodriguez House, which is RM Schindler's. It's a city landmark, it also has the Mills Act. Um, I've been involved in Mills acting properties before. I was the first owner of a residence in the city of Los Angeles to get Mills acted, and then we also were involved in the pilot program with Mary Jo Winder and the City Planning Department of Pasadena to do the first Mills acting of a green and green in Pasadena that I owned at the time. So I'm familiar with, with what goes on, and I really appreciate the staff report, which I also read in preparation for today. I've also known Kurt and Andrew for several years now, and, um, feel strongly about the level of restoration and conservation that they've already performed on the house and will continue to perform on the house. Um, obviously, Kurt has a background in city planning and is nationally recognized for what he's done. Andrew's had a design furniture studio for quite a few years. Additionally, Andrew recently became a docent at the Gamble House and has gone through six months of training there. I've been a docent there for about 20 years, and I'm past president of the Board of Directors, and I was there when we did the conservation on the Gamble House, so, uh, the level of workmanship that they've put into, especially the inside of the house, I know some of the commissioners have seen it, is really high-end. I think it's kind of interesting that a wood, um, fabricator, uh, Mr. Ashton, uh, was the original owner, so the idea that the, the wood fixture contractor, um, energy went into the construction of the inside of the house is really interesting, and I agree on the outside of the house, the, the detailing is not as fine. The, um, when you look in the living room, and you look at the King Prost truss that spans, uh, the, the very open, beautiful, story and a half living room, that sort of detailing was not used outside quite as much, and I think Kurt's probably right on that. It was probably post-Depression, and money was limited, and the money was spent inside the house. Um, nevertheless, I think it's a really wonderful example of, um, Spanish colonial revival, and as a resident of the Woodlands and having seen how little historic preservation has gone on in our neighborhood, even an informal discussion on Neo-Drar on our street with some of the neighbors about creating, um, some kind of historic preservation overlay zone or becoming a district, met with a lot of disinterest and animosity on the part of some of the neighbors, who were just, you know, this is the Woodlands, we don't necessarily want that over here, which is kind of sad, uh, because we have beautiful resources, and I think by Mills acting properties like this, um, that have been beautifully maintained and will continue to be maintained by the right people, I think helps encourage other people in areas like ours, which is kind of checkered in terms of, of restoration and preservation would be a good thing. And just addressing briefly two things, the, um, the strong street presence of the street, of the house from the street, is somewhat lost now because of development on the hillside and the overgrowth of trees. I'm sure probably a decade or two ago, the house did rise in more of a fortress-like structure above the street, and was probably more iconic in its, um, visual than it is now, and unfortunately, if you look on Andinis, you can see again the hopscotch pattern of preservation that's gone on with infill and, and people that have changed historic houses, and so I think anything that we can do as a community to encourage people to take care of residences, especially, uh, when they're really, um, lovely, outstanding, uh, examples of architecture, I think is a good thing, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Do I have any other speakers on this particular? Did you give us a card?
Oh, the honor of Mr. Gregory.
Well, would you, we step forward, please.
This is special day, Gregory's here. It's a special day, Mr. Gregory's here.
That's right. Yeah.
Good afternoon, it's nice to see you all again. I'm Tim Gregory, the building biographer who did the research on this house. Um, I've certainly haven't seen every house in Glendale by any means, but I've seen a lot of them over the years as I've researched them. Uh, most of them kind of fade from my memory after I've done the report, but this one hasn't. Um, I think it's, the significance is not in the people who live there, uh, it's not because we found a distinguished architect. Uh, we've mentioned John Ashton, who was the original owner, was a building contractor who probably had a lot of input into the quality of the construction. In fact, the county assessor in 1933 rated the construction quality as special, something they didn't do very often. What I was taken with was its hilltop setting, uh, the impression, and the impression it makes on visitors as they ascend the steps to the house. There are 42 steps and five landings, I know, I counted them all as I trudged up there, and it was amazing to me how the, the view of the house changes as you go up the steps. It becomes this, at the street level, it's this big, three-story fortress-like structure that's kind of forbidding in some ways, and yet, when you get to the top and face the front door, it's a small, one-story-
And yet, when you get to the top and face the front door, it's a small, one-story, very welcoming, human-scale type of building. And I think this is a great testament to the design and structural talents of the people who put it together. Although from the street, the house appears to dominate the hilltop and the neighborhood, especially probably before the vegetation grew up, the house actually does not dominate its sight. On all those terraces in front or on the side of the house, it's more of a backdrop to the wonderful views and also to the fresh air currents that go through. In fact, the owners say they hardly ever use the air conditioning because the house is situated in such a way that it takes advantage of all the cross ventilation that's naturally there. Although the house, as I mentioned, is kind of an optical illusion from the street, it's this huge fortress. And when you go up to the top, it's a very human-scale, very livable house, which I think is very interesting. So I hope you'll carefully consider the significance of the property in view of this unique structural characteristics that it has. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I had a question to Tim Gregory. I'm glad you're here.
One moment.
Thank you for being here. You've mentioned this in your other reports and past projects. When you say it's rated special, what does that exactly mean?
Well, the assessor, when he first went out there and when the building was new, he had about four, well, he had sometimes three or four different categories he could use to say how good the construction quality was, from average, poor, very seldom seen poor, average, good, and special. And usually they're qualified as good if it's a basic type of residence. But special wasn't used very often at all. So when he said that, he must have been impressed when he first viewed it.
Special as far as construction technique, not necessarily?
Well, quality also, if it was.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Ruben, do you have a question of Tim?
No, I don't.
Okay. Do I have any more speakers on this particular item in the, from the audience? Okay. Before I'm going to close the public hearing and allow my colleagues to discuss this amongst ourselves.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a couple of questions to staff?
Of course.
I've mentioned this before about zoning violations or things don't meet today's standard per se. The reason I'm mentioning it, I mean, how does that reflect when we review this? Because in this particular case, you have a circular driveway in the front?
Not on this house.
It does?
No. Oh, well, it has a, is it actually circular?
Because that clearly doesn't meet the 50% landscape requirement. The front 50% has to be landscaped, if I, not mistaken.
That's correct.
I didn't see that. Then the porch on the west side, is it? That is the breezeway you're talking about?
Mm-hmm. This one?
That roof is in the setback, and I doubt if there's a permit for that. Now, we're reviewing this as per historic significance. What is the, you know, fallback on this when we have issues like this?
Well, with something like the driveway, we'd have to know that that wasn't the original condition. If it were the original condition, then it could be a non-conforming situation, grandfathered in. And if they needed to change it, then they would have to meet code.
But in this particular case, it's right on the property line.
Yeah, and this I can't really address. I don't know if it has a permit, I'm not sure if we know, Kurt.
Because if you look at it from the top, I Googled it, and you can clearly see that it's not part of the original house.
Sure, no, I think we understand that in terms of where it is versus on the sideyard setback or the rear yard setback. And on a house like this, I'm not even sure how that's configured in terms of there's the street setback and then, you know, everything else, I guess, is side yard and rear yard.
But this is clearly in the side yard. This is right on the property line. You're speaking of the post.
No, is it a discussion or a question? Was it a question?
That was a question, sorry.
Yeah, the way side yard setbacks are calculated, it's based on an average over the length of the facade, and I'd have to, we'd have to really look at the engineering map. That's all for now.
So just to piggyback on Commissioner Martin's statement, then, if in fact that that obviously is in some violation, would they have to apply for some sort of a variance?
They'd have to apply for variance if they were cited for it.
Okay. All right. Any other comments?
Shall I question, following your question?
Sure.
Can we, Jay, if this is approved, can we ask for not going, the owner not going to variance? Shall we ask that this is part of?
To waive the variance.
No, the commission can't waive a variance. So if this were, the commission possibly could comment at a variance hearing through staff, I don't know if staff could do it or if you could come as members of the public. But yeah, we can't bypass that.
Okay, one more question, Mr. Chair. And should that weigh in our decision or not?
In general, we don't look, we don't look at the zoning envelope and we, at my level, going through the applications, don't take that into consideration. We're very focused on the historic merits and whether it meets the criteria or not.
Okay, thank you.
If there were an egregious problem, I think that jumped out at us, I think we would take care of it.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Okay, well, any other, any more comments about the house?
I had one comment.
Your point of view?
The front stairs, the remodel on the front stairs, the railing, were all done by permits, correct? To my understanding, all that?
Yeah, there's a permit for the stairs, I assumed. We don't know for sure, the railings, to my eye, don't look like they date to the time of the stair and terrace paving construction. But I don't remember the railing specifically being called out in the permit.
Because it calls out the entry porch?
Yeah, it calls out the steps going up from the street.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't know, do you think? Talk about it?
Yeah. Let's go ahead and discuss it.
Okay.
I just, I'll just sort of chime in a few comments. I didn't get a chance to go in the house, so I'm sure it's lovely. And from what my colleagues have told me, it's very attractive. However, I think we do concentrate quite a bit on the exterior of a home. And that's one of, one of the reasons why we do this. But I guess the garage door is, since the house, the garage is so prominent to the front of the house, that's sort of always been an issue with me. I think we've always mentioned that, that some of these garage doors just don't seem to fall into the same scheme of the style of the home. So I think that would be one thing I'm a little bit, I'd be concerned with. And of course, that enclosure that was made, what is it, patio enclosure, Jay, you said?
Yeah, there was an outdoor patio.
Outdoor patio enclosure, basically?
Right.
Okay, I would sort of question that, the design of that item. Anyone else?
You want to go?
Go ahead, Mr. Murray. I'll listen to you.
The house is very, very beautiful. I really like the house. It's the view from the street and the balcony, decorated balcony. And as you approach to the stairs, going up, the experience of seeing the house from different angles and then reaching to the terrace up there, everything seems to be But there is, there is something missing here, and that something is that, based upon criteria, criteria D, it doesn't reach that level and it is not one of the best examples of what it could be or what it should be. All those little additions have affected, in my opinion, the historic significance of the building. The railings, the lack of landscaping, as you approach this building, before you get to the stairs, as if you are walking a barren land. I think landscaping is also part of the heritage of a building. We often have discussions with the staff, disagree and agree. In this particular case, I do agree with the staff wholeheartedly. I think their analysis and summation is very good. We have no choice. It's very clear, it says it has, the building has to be one of the outstanding remaining examples of the neighborhood. Clearly, being this as lovely building as it is, it is not one of the most outstanding buildings remaining. So therefore, I would be supporting staff's recommendation and I would vote for not recommending this to the city council. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Mr. Amirian stole the words from my mouth. I was just going to.
That's why I wanted to be the last.
I drove by the house and just approaching to the house, it's a beautiful frontage. And the way the house is sitting on the hilltop, it's so beautiful and it's a very unique house in the neighborhood. But going around and just looking from the backside and looking at the detailing of the, all the outside work that it's been done, it's missing that characteristics as a historical, like all those tiny little details that it needs to just complete the historical point of view of a house. It's missing somehow, somewhere down the line. Something has been done, like, for example, the railings, they're very plain. Being a historical house, you know, you just expect to have some kind of a characteristics. And all those tiny details, those are the things that it's missing from outside. I'm sure the inside is beautiful and all the woodwork that you've done through the years. It must be a gorgeous house inside. But looking from outside, something is missing. It's just, it's a very unique house and it's a very gorgeous house from looking, from approaching to the house, but from the side and all the little details, there's something missing that it's, I don't think that it's, we can recommend as a historical house.
Thank you, Sita.
Sure.
Yes, Commissioner Martin, you have something to say?
Most of it has been covered. But I do agree with you, Mr. Chair, that this particular house and Mr. Amirian also, when you arrive there, it gives you, you know, great feeling. But when you go around and get into the stairs and the walkways, it just loses it. I think the fact on this is that there's too many alterations. We have aluminum windows on the front and both sides, we have a garage door, and we have the main thing, the stairs, have been altered so much that it loses its character. And I do agree also that this doesn't reach the level of designation. Technically speaking, per historical guidelines, state's guidelines, what level does this have to be? Is it a 5D, a 5B, in order for it to be?
The local listing is 5S3.
5S3.
Yeah. You know, if this were a district proposal, it would probably be a contributor in a district, which is a 5D3. 5S3 is the individual local designation?
In my opinion, it doesn't reach that level because we've designated quite a few examples of Spanish revival, not necessarily in this neighborhood, but we have certainly quite a few better examples, actually down the street, and a few of them are better examples than this. And I do agree with my colleagues that, you know, this doesn't reach the level. There's too many alterations. I would have maybe gone, actually, when you look at the house, let me rephrase back, if you go back to the front of the house. That element is the key defining feature, the gable roof, the balcony, that's all that house is. Now, I wish the courtyard site was in the front, would have made it, but it has a, you know, it has too many alterations and it doesn't reach that level. And I agree with staff, criteria A and E has no relationship in this case, you know, we're just basing it in architecture. And I strongly feel that this doesn't reach that level. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can make a motion.
You wish to make a motion? I just want to make one last comment. Is that that's okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I just wanted to, yeah, I just basically wanted to sort of concur with my colleagues that the two items, I think the house could probably, within time, if the owners wish to, do a little more work on the exterior to bring it up, I think it, I think it has the potential to become a good candidate for the Mills Act. But I think, to go along with my colleagues, it's, right now, it doesn't, doesn't illustrate that potential yet. So do I hear a motion?
Yes, I would move that the Historic Preservation Commission recommend to the city council that the property at 1441 Andens Drive not be designated historic resource in Glendale, in the Glendale Register of the Historic Resources, based on the findings identified in the staff determination. And then also, I would recommend that our commission to recommend that the Mills Act also not to be carried.
I have a second?
Second to motion.
Motion carries. Roll call.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Amirian?
Yes.
Commissioner Stepanian?
Yes.
And Chair Adrian?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question, staff? Now, if applicants appeal it or they, it just automatically goes to? It will be the applicant's choice. The HPC decision is advisory to city council. So the applicant could take this forward to city council with a negative recommendation and present to council to see what they thought. Or the applicant could choose to not take it to council and then we would consider it a completed application with a denial at HPC level.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next item, Jay.
Okay. Speed through these. I hate to be a downer today, but 835 Cumberland Road is another lovely Spanish colonial revival house in Glendale that I've also had trouble making the findings for listing on the register or for the Mills Act. And I'll go through the presentation and explain where my position comes from. The house is located in northwest Glendale in the Art Even Highlands Historic District. So it's within the historic district boundaries. And it was also identified when the Cumberland Heights survey was done in 2004. So the house has been surveyed in 2004 and then resurveyed for the Cumberland Heights survey in 2008. It's a lovely, one-story, primarily one-story Spanish house at the corner. So it says at the northeast corner, and you have some good street frontages that again show some of the classic character-defining features of its style, with the smooth stucco, the low pitched Spanish tile roof. A few alterations have been made to the house over the years that are part of the concerns I had in terms of its eligibility under the criteria. You can see the windows, two of the windows in the lower photograph are actually later replacements. They're kind of sliding windows that were inserted in a location where there originally, I think, three separate window openings for each of those kitchen windows. Here's the house seen from Cumberland Road, and you can see it's just set in magnificent landscaping. It's got a beautiful planting pattern and is very picturesque. Because of that, this is the picture window looking out from the living room. And you can see because of the slight slope on the site that it has a taller kind of street presence from this side than it does from the other side where it's sunken a little bit below grade. Here's the resurvey of the area that was done for the Art Even Highlands Historic District when it was proposed. And the surveyor felt the same way that they did in 2004, that this was a house that made an excellent contributor to a potential historic district, and it's now a contributor to the Art Even Highlands District. But they did not make the finding that it was individually eligible, which would be the category of 5B, meaning that it's both individually eligible and eligible as a contributor in a historic district. Here are some of the other details. Some of the work that you see where these stucco, low stucco walls and the piers with light fixtures on them is of more recent vintage. The original, the original house was more open to the street and these walls create, you know, a beautiful entry courtyard, but they do take away from the historic character of the house because they're a fairly recent addition. The owner who's here today, I don't know if we have the The owner who's here today, I don't know if we have the photograph or the drawings of the house?
I don't.
Oh, some of the commissioners were asking about that, but we, it is one of the remarkable things. We, we often have people asking us if we have drawings of their house, and we're like, no, it's so rare, and Ms. O'Connor has the, the drawings of her house, which is pretty exciting. And you can see from those that there is a lot of the house is intact as it was originally built, but in my opinion, reviewing this, there were too many changes that had been made for it to maintain the historic character that we usually associate with our Glendale Register properties and especially the Mills Act properties. And then I also feel it's important that we've had professional consultants look at this house twice in their survey, and I give deference to kind of their, their opinion that this house looked to be a contributor rather than individually eligible, even though, you know, obviously, it's a lovely house. One of its most interesting features are these outdoor spaces. The, the interior rooms are very integrally knit with some of these patios and outdoor areas that make a very lovely, lovely place. But again, couldn't quite make the finding based on our criteria and also out of deference to the surveys. I won't read all of these as I just did, but we have the seven criteria. We are always hoping to find out that the historic report tells us that someone very interesting or important did something in the house, or built the house, or lived there. We didn't find out anything in this case. So again, we're focusing on the criterion D, that it's either one of the best remaining type, architectural types in its neighborhood, or that it's, has outstanding or exemplary architectural design, details, materials, or craftsmanship. And in the first case, there are many very excellent examples of Spanish colonial revival in the area, and so we can't say it's one of the best. And again, this house doesn't have those outstanding or exemplary features that jump out at us, saying this is a Spanish colonial with so many of the character-defining features of the style, that it really brings together kind of the work of a, an important, a designer of interest, I'd say. This combined with the fact that there have been significant alterations made when you see it from the street, kept me from being able to make the finding for designation. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay. Appreciate it. I'm sure the owners are here, or the, the owner is here, Ms. O'Connor?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Would you like to speak?
Pardon?
Would you like to speak? Of course she would. Would you like to give your name and your address, please?
Kelly O'Connor, 835 Cumberland Road, Glendale, 91202. And I, I dispute the fact a little bit that there has been significant changes. I mean, the kitchen windows were changed and a courtyard was put on the front, but I do have the drawings of the house, and those are really the changes that have been made to the home. I wasn't, in fact, I was under the understanding that fences and things like that and, you know, security with lights and things weren't something that was necessarily, you know, that was attached to the property in such a way that it discounted you from getting, you know, historical designation. I think it really is an outstanding example of the architecture of the area. I am in the 87 home tract that was recently assigned as the Art Even District, what's it called?
Art Even Highlands.
Highlands District. And my home, back when you had the map up, it's situated between two historic properties. The famous Art Even home is right at the top, that little mirror, the very top of the thing, I think it's 851 Mountain, yes.
There you go.
So if you came right down their front stairs, my property goes almost, you know, street to street, right there from mountain, right where it came down. And then the house right across the street is at 1675, just below mine. That has recently been designated at 1675 Art Even. And I, I think it's vitally important that we try to preserve properties. I love this house, and I live in this house because, I'm the fourth owner of it. The couple that built it lived there for 48 years. The couple that bought it from them, the Boyd's, did, did do a lot of the landscaping and so forth. They won the Glendale Beautiful Award back in 1989 for doing all the, all of those things and putting that kind of energy and love into their neighborhood and into their property. And the couple that, the woman that bought it from them was an animator at Disney, and I bought it from her, but I think that the reason that I own the house today, when she was selling it, because she did have multiple people looking at the house, is I wrote her a letter with my, you know, very heartfelt letter with my offer saying that I'm committed to the authenticity of this home, and I, I am committed to it. And so the home is protected while I live there. And if I sell it to someone else, it may not be so protected. And as you look at this, you know, this beautiful area that I live in with these historical homes, I think it's really vital that the city do everything they can to encourage people to keep the charm and, you know, their home. I'm not looking to change it. I think I identified in my application, one of the only changes I wanted to make outside was lighting it so people could see it better. And one of the things that I would like to do with the lighting is, I've been doing some research into authentic light fixtures, you know, to try to restore some of the authenticity to those pillars and right outside my door, and that is absolutely something that I would, that I would like to do, and I will do. I was home one day in July, and I got a knock at my door. And who is it? It's the Glendale Historical Society, who wants to come in and see my house, and now they're putting it on the tour, on the Glendale Historical Tour this October. So I believe I'm one of, I don't know, maybe seven houses, eight houses that are going to be on this tour, and they did want to put something on it from, that had the characteristics of the period and that they could, you know, bring their historical members through. I think that's really important. My house has, you're seeing it from two different views, that's probably even a better picture of it.
This one?
Yeah, because it's, it has such a strong presentation. It's on a corner and it's on a gentle slope up, so when you come to that corner on Cumberland or Art Even, two fantastic streets in the area, and you look up, you just see this great example, I think, of this ironwork. And my house, like the other home, also was really thought, was carefully laid out in terms of airflow. I rarely have to turn on my air conditioner, and I think that's one of the reasons they have all those iron grates, is so that they could sleep with all their windows open. Beautiful, big windows. I do think it's an outstanding example of the craftsmanship and of that period of 1936. And anyway, I, I understand you all have to, you know, base your opinions on rules and everything else, and I hope that you feel that mine fits in to those criteria because I'm really dedicated to this property, and I, I have just loved living there, and I, you know, will absolutely keep it up, and I just hope that any future generation that buys this house or other houses in my neighborhood do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time, for coming by.
I ask you a question. When did you buy the house?
Oh, I bought the house in 2006.
And have you made any improvements since you've been in the house?
Um, you know, I came into this house, the woman that owned it before me was a, was an animator married to an imagineer. Imagineers are the guys that do a lot of the work on the theme parks for Disney. So he had, the electrical was great. When they inspected my house, they said, you'll never have to put a roof on this house, you have two of them, because the roof was leaking, that beautiful clay roof, they removed it all, they put another roof underneath, and they put it all back on just to preserve it. And so to answer your question, I have had to do very, very little to the house, other than, you know, change a couple of colors with paint, and I have done quite a bit of...
Inside or on the outside?
Outside. No, this is, this is, well, I think the, the smaller picture you saw a few minutes ago is before I owned the house.
Mm-hmm.
That one.
Mm-hmm.
So the colors have all remained intact on the outside. So just inside.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Please.
Oh, Mr. Gregor, would you like to speak?
It's a treat, it's two times today.
Three, I think it's going to be four. We're done for.
Problem is the homeowner, I, in my opinion...
Can you bring your laptop with you? It's all right, it's all right.
This is another house that's kind of stayed in my memory since I did the report. To me, it's the real epitome of a 1920s and 1930s desire of immigrants to California to create an environment that really capitalized on the great climate and the opportunities for outdoor living California presented. Every room in the house, with the exception of the bathrooms, has immediate access to the outdoors through French doors, or more, sometimes just one set of French doors, or sometimes more, that provide not only the natural light and ventilation to each room, but also make the outdoors an integral part of living in the house. I counted a total of eight, what I call, outdoor rooms on three sides of the house. These are eight unique areas for sitting or people to gather together, each one of which has a unique style, and each gives a different view of the house and gardens, which is quite a feat when you consider how modest-sized the lot is. Well, as Jay mentioned, the walls and piers along the Art Even frontage appear to be new or newer, but the remaining hardscape is original according to building permit records. There's nothing to say that any of the other walls were built later. I think the style of the house is also noteworthy because it's, although it's basically Spanish Revival, it was built in 1936 and has a number of elements of the California ranch style that was just emerging in the mid-1930s, such as a more modern stripped-down, kind of sleeker look to it, with a lot of wall planes, plain and free of decoration, generous use of large windows and French doors, and a real sort of turning away from traditional European styles into something that was really Californian. There are not a lot of examples of this type of transitional styles in Southern California since so few houses were built during the Great Depression. So I asked the commission to look closely at how this house exemplifies the pre-war interpretation of what the Southern Californian lifestyle was all about, and also to look at its architecture, which was a harbinger of the thousands of ranch-style homes that were built after World War II. This is one of the earliest examples of a transition between Spanish and the California ranch style, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll close the public hearing.
Sure. Reopen.
Reopen the meeting.
I know that it was commented that the, there was no one of historical significance that lived in the house, but I just wanted to tell you a little bit about Mr. Murphy, who, who did build the house and lived there with his wife for 48 years. Well, she owned it for 48 years, he passed away during that time. He, he attended Dartmouth, and he played both baseball and football, and he also played on the All-American Hockey Team. When he came to California, he, to Los Angeles, he gained fame as a football star with the Los Angeles Athletic Club and was described as one of the city's most prominent athletes. He, Mr. Murphy also flew in World War I. He was actually reported to have been dead at one point from crashing a plane, but he was not dead. And anyway, there's a number of different articles in the Los Angeles Times we were able to find, that, that Mr. Gregor is able to find on Mr. Murphy's exploits, and he was referred to by the Los Angeles Times as one of the leading American aces. He also was a war, was in World War II. And anyway, I, I think that that's important, you know, the things that he did in the war, and also the fact that he was known as a leading athlete in the Los Angeles area. I just wanted you to be aware of that as well.
Did you know that, Jay?
Yeah, that's in your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay knew. Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Are you sure you want to do that?
We're going to break it soon.
With hesitation. Okay, anyone wish to start our discussion?
I'm sorry, I have to ask my questions.
No.
Mr. Chair.
You already had your...
Make up my permit history. One question I had, in your report says, further research to evaluate design or ownership. What do you mean by that?
Could you direct me?
I didn't print it, but I wrote it down. Let's see. I don't have that report in front of me.
Come on, you have it in here. Do you give it to Vic?
Thank you.
Are you sure it was on this page?
It's on this one here. I'm sorry, give me a minute.
No problem.
While you're looking...
Any of you guys good singers?
I'm sorry.
Could have a musical interlude.
Yeah. Let me ask you a question, Jay.
Sure.
Since we're, we have a few minutes here. You mentioned in your, in your staff report that the, the installation of those low, low walls in the front, gates, that was added to the home since it was originally built, detracted, did you say? Was the word you used detracted from the historical significance?
Not from the beauty of the house. There certainly, it certainly makes it a very nice environment, but detracts from the historic character of the house, which was originally more open to the street, and which meant that you could, you know, really see the house a little bit more. But sometimes it's just a matter of, you know, non, nonhistoric fabric dominating kind of the visibility of, you know, overwhelming to some degree. It doesn't overwhelm.
We can overlook that comment, all right, a little bit?
No, you can. Speak for yourself.
I, I, well, I might, I don't know. Okay, back to Mr. Commissioner Mardian.
Page three, the first paragraph under significance, the last par, I mean, last statement there. These are, these assessments are made with the caveat that further research may reveal aspects of the property's design and ownership and history.
Could I see that?
What part of that is you're reading?
It's the, the last, last paragraph of the first.
Understood. This, this was my way of perhaps not very clearly indicating that when the Cumberland Heights and the Art Even Highlands surveys were done, they didn't do any in-depth research into the ownership history or the, the other levels of significance a property could have besides just the architectural character you see from the street. So when that assessment was made, it's always done, all of our reconnaissance surveys are done with that caveat, that there may be interesting information that could come out later. The sentence I end that paragraph with, none of the information supplied in the present nomination suggests that the property rises to that benchmark, we didn't find. Mr. Murphy's story is interesting. We've, with a lot of our nominations, we have very interesting stories that don't quite make that person significant at the level of Glendale or regional or national history, but we always tell owners that we do keep the information in the file. We don't, it's not like we don't think it's interesting or important, but it just doesn't necessarily help us meet the criterion C.
Now, that's pertaining to ownership, but it also says design, so what research would be to...
Owner, owner, it would usually be through ownership history or just general historic research, using all of the new tools that we have to kind of dig in to addresses, you can look up people's addresses, you can look up names, and you can start telling a broader story.
Now, a few other questions I have. Now, this was designated as 5D3, and you said that there were twice that was surveyed. So it's remained as 5D3, I believe?
Yeah, it didn't change.
Didn't change.
Yeah.
Now, the difference between 5D3 and 5S3 is contributor versus individual?
Right, it's a contributor to the historic district, so the house is protected as a contributing structure in the historic district. So HPC already has design review authority over any future changes to the house.
Present, please, why?
As we speak, yeah.
Okay. And the last question I had, we usually, when we have the Mills Act, the work program pertains to the outside, in my opinion, not interior work. And the program here talks about future work as being interior work.
Yeah, the, the owners, when we actually write up the Mills Act contract, we kind of revise that kind of thing to make sure that the work that gets written into the contract is only the kind of exterior work that we're going to be reviewing.
Okay. And last question I have, is the changes, their windows, the light and pilasters, are those the main things, and the garage door?
The, the entry steps, the kind of entry courtyard is kind of an alteration, the two windows at the kitchen, and then those, the low walls and the lights.
And we have two different chimney caps because of the change that occurred over the years.
Yeah, and I thought one of them was kind of, kind of met some of the things we've been talking about with potential good covers. So that, that wasn't shown as an example of a problem.
If you look at it from the other side, you'll see both of them, I think, no?
That was...
That's all I had on the questions.
Does it, is that the same one? Yeah.
Don't worry.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Mardian.
Don't look at me. I started the other one first.
Sita, should I look? Sita, you want to mention something?
Well, I just would love to see the inside of the house when the upcoming tour is going to be. I would be coming there to see the patios because they're just beautiful outside, and I'm sure inside is as much beautiful as it is. I drove by and I just turned around three times because I just really like that neighborhood, the whole neighborhood. And to me, the house is intact. I don't see that much things that had been done outside to change the characteristics of the house. of the house. But there is tiny little things that it's been mentioned that I guess it's been changed, and that's the only thing that it just, they're hesitant to make a comment as a, for the board to take it as a historical house. But to me, it's just, it's a very unique house, and it's just, it has all the tiny little details and characteristics that a historical house has to have. And you protected the house and the prior owners very well, and I don't see any reason why not.
Thank you, Zita. Thank you. Now, Mr. Marion, would you like to...
Go to Mardian.
Okay. Okay, we'll skip you again.
This is a tough one, yes.
More time, he wants more time. He wants, he wants, he wants to organize your thoughts, I don't blame you. It's a tough one.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to go back to one more. So the designation, again, here has to reach the 5S3 level individually?
It has to read the, we can skip the California code. It has to meet one of the seven Glendale criteria.
Okay, three, okay. I believe the A and E doesn't apply, but I'm hesitant on D as far as architecture because I, again, this is a case that we've been, you know, in the past, we've been looking at buildings that have been some alteration done to it, but this, again, has several alterations, in my opinion. There's quite a few Spanish Colonial Revival designated recently in that neighborhood that are better examples than this. It doesn't mean that yet, within the same era, within the same historical fabric, it's in a historical district, it's already protected. So I think the level of somebody changing this to anything else is going to be very minimal. As we go in the future, our rules get more tightened up. Since this is a contributor, I feel strongly it doesn't reach that level of being individually designated. Again, there's too many alterations. If it was one, I would say remedy it. We picked on a few things, and we let people change windows and things like that and come back to us. But in this case, yeah, it's a beautiful architecture, it's a beautiful house, but it doesn't reach that level. It has great landscaping in the front, but, you know, the house itself doesn't make it, in my opinion. And I'm hesitant to support it, and I think I agree with staff's recommendation that they don't meet any of the criterias that they've applied for. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, we have a comment for you, Mr. ...
Yeah, yeah, I had the opportunity also to visit the house, and I had the opportunity to go inside. Actually, the inside, the space relationships is very contemporary. One space flows into the other, and there are these visual connections from one space to the other. It is just so wonderful. And outside rooms, I like to call them, or spaces, they are rooms, really. They are just breathtaking. I personally have a long history with the house visually. I take lots of figure drawing courses in Brand Library, and I make sure that I drive by this house.
Thought you lived next door.
So I have seen the house so, so many times. But then again, we are, we do have criterias to judge these things, and when we are judging this on criterion D, the changes that have occurred in the past, the pilasters, the light fixtures, the front being kind of closed by this new front entrance, not the door, but the front space, does not let me feel and think that the building is one of the most outstanding remaining examples. I feel very sorry when someone demolishes a beautiful building and does something to it that, you know, you can change a door and a few steps in front of a building and destroy the building totally. It pains me a lot. And hopefully, in this case, if it changes hands, it will not happen because of the designation that was assigned to it as the contributor. But I agree with Mr. Mardian that it does not reach to the level as the building is one of the outstanding examples in the neighborhood. So I am also enthusiastic supporter of Jay's report. He did a very good job. He tried to be fair. He gave us positives and negatives of designation, and I agree with his report. So I also will not support this for designation. Having said that, I'm saying it's a lot of hesitation, but then again, we have rules and we have to kind of abide with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Marion. Well, pretty, okay, well, I guess it's my turn. Jay, would you mind flipping back to the front slide of the house? I didn't get inside, and I apologize, but I'm sure it's gorgeous. I'm kind of torn. When I first drove up to the house, I was very impressed. Certainly, the landscaping and the way the house is sighted is gorgeous. I mean, it's, there aren't too many that are, that can duplicate that environment. But I knew we had to get a little deeper. I guess the thing that sort of gets me is the colors a little bit. I didn't care for some of the choice of colors, and the light fixtures, of course, we've been mentioning, probably aren't positive things for the design of the home. Could you go to the front door? You had a slide of the front door.
They want me to leave.
Yeah. That's very good. Thank you, Jay. I look at that front door, and I wonder if that's, is that original or not? And the painting scheme of the whole house seems to be, you know, it's, I don't know. I just can't get too enthused about the painting colors and the scheme, and I think that's something, in my opinion, that is not conducive of the style that it's trying to, you know, Spanish Revival look. Somebody, whoever did, that's why my question to you, Ms. O'Connor, was whether or not you did any work on the house. Because to me, somebody came in and gave, and tried to enhance some of the appearance, and I don't think it did that. I think it went the other way, detracted. So I guess that would be a negative in my mind. Jay mentioned there are several things that were changed to the original design. Well, you know, we don't, we have to go along with Jay's comments.
No.
Because we don't have any other way of authenticity, making that authenticity valid, except to review maybe your documents. So anyway, I'm torn. I really am. It's a beautiful home. I'm sure it's gorgeous inside as well, and I love the backyard, and I love the way it's, the way the backyard is with all that beautiful landscaping and hardscaping work. I, I'm not too sure. You know, if you could do something with the colors, in my mind, if you could...
Mr. Chairman.
You're going to have to, I think you're going to have to step back up at the mic, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, you'd have to reopen the public hearing as well.
Okay. I'm going to reopen it, open the public hearing one more time.
The ironwork, you know, in my opinion, probably needs to be taken all the way down and powder-coated to, you know, an original black. And the, you know, when you drive around, you see Spanish-style homes that have more of, you know, bring in some of the green to them and more of a, not quite as white of the texture, you know, more of a, you know, a little bit warmer.
Your exposed rafters all have that...
The same color as the roofline. I mean, if I was, when I do paint it, that's, those are the things that I would do. I probably would change the color of the rafters and the gables that come out from them underneath and incorporate probably a green, and then definitely change the ironwork back to black. And, you know, like, as I mentioned, I'm already looking at trying to find authentic light fixtures to, you know, change those, and I, you know, the light fixtures aren't meant to be pink. I agree.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyway, I, you know, I close the, close the public hearing again. I think the house needs the appointing, to make the house come and basically, I think, for me to accept it as historic, I think those are, they're not heavy-duty items, but they're cosmetic things in general. I think, I think the board would probably find it a little more acceptable. Anyway, I appreciate it. It's a beautiful home, though, and it's got, it's got the potential. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I?
We need to ask for a motion.
No, well, I, sorry, I'm trying to follow up as...
Yes, same here.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
All right, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, we, I don't think we can ask the applicant to do something and come back without having consensus of the Commission that those certain things, if they are done, we can approve it.
Okay.
We don't have that.
Yeah, let me reiterate my statement, at least to my mind. I can't speak for my colleagues, but in my mind, I think those items, if they were revisited, might make the home more acceptable to me. I don't want to speak for my colleagues. I apologize.
With all the respect, Mr. Chair, we're not controlling color, are we, these days, on designation?
I don't know.
I'm asking my colleagues a question instead. Are we getting into color?
May I just kind of clarify my position on the colors? We are approving or disapproving a historic building. If this building has been, has had that color since 1930, we cannot change it and approve it as historic building. We just can't do that. So we have to be, we have to be very careful. We are not, we are not judging a design. We are judging a historic building. If we were in Design Review Board, we could judge that and make those kinds of comments, but we can't do now. It's a different kind of setting. That's where I understand, where I stand.
Okay.
If I can bring in the staff perspective.
All right.
Commissioner Marion is correct in terms of HPC is the design review authority for designated buildings. So if this building were already designated and the owner said they were going to paint it purple, and I thought that that was problematic, I would say we might have to bring that to the Commission. In the world of preservation, there are varying views and philosophies about color choices, and I tend to be on the more lenient liberal side in terms of letting colors kind of reflect contemporary taste and personal taste, and I look at paint choices as something that are completely reversible, so they don't change the design or the historic character of the built parts of a house. But I also recognize that many people in our neighborhoods would be very concerned to have a purple house, you know, popping up down the street. But we don't have any specific, we can, as a design review authority, ask people to consider color as a choice. Personally, when I looked at these colors, I didn't think, I've seen other Spanish houses that kind of have a palette that's similar to this. I think the issue here is that the window sash are painted white, and then the inner portions of the recessed openings are painted the kind of pink color, so that's a little different than what we usually see.
I don't see wood trim painted pink too often, but it's...
Yeah, here you can see the windows white.
Commissioner Marion, if that was authentic, then we can't, we can't make a judgment, and I concur. I was taking, I was taking a liberty there by assuming that that probably was something that was repainted over the years.
But I think ultimately, even if we knew the original color palette of the house, if the current owner said, hey, I don't really like that original color palette, we, as a Commission, might be open to changes. There's no requirement that a property meet its original color scheme, so...
But historically, Spanish homes with these kind of, I'm sorry, Mr. ...
No, I wasn't.
When we have recessed windows, and we don't have that combination of colors.
Like this one?
Yeah.
No, not, no, it's not traditional.
It's not traditional, so, and I'm kind of, want to have a free world here, a place about color. I agree with you. Maybe the colors will make it look different if it was a different color, but I don't think that is the issue in this house. The issue is those stairs, the platforms on the balconies, the windows off the kitchens were recessed at one time, a much, much deeper recess.
Oh, no, I totally agree with that, too.
I mean, there's much more...
Yeah, I was just, I was just sort of piggybacking on a couple of the things that I thought would, would bring the house around, other than the windows that we spoke of and the light fixtures that we've spoken of and other such things. And I would even venture, and I'm taking liberties here, but I would venture that front door was not, not the original door either, or it was painted subsequently. Well, you know, in traditional Spanish Colonial, we see a very natural wood finish home doorway, and I think that maybe would, you know, without looking at your original drawings, maybe another factor, maybe another reason, you know. So anyway, do we want to, anyone else want to make any comments, or do I want to hear a motion?
I mean, I have a question, Mr. Chair, and my colleague. Is there anything that they have to do as far as additional research or anything that would change our opinion on it?
Well, I don't know what our opinion is. I know what is my opinion after reading this and seeing the pictures, but I don't think we...
Well, I'm sensing some direction, that's why I'm saying, you know, is there any remedy to the...
I am, I am very much in sync with staff's recommendation. I really think that the house is very, very beautiful, the spaces are wonderful, but it just doesn't reach that level.
I agree with you on that. That's not a bad question.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, but I need to read the...
Last page, the last page, what?
That's the wrong one. Can I have yours, Mr. Chairman?
That's the wording that's done by...
I'll make a motion to concur with staff and Historic Preservation recommend to City Council that the property at 835 Cumberland Road not be designated a historic resource in the Glendale Registry of Historic Resource based on the finding identified in staff determination. Staff also suggests that the Historic Preservation Commission recommend that the City Council not authorize the city manager to enter into Mills Act contract with the property owner for property tax savings. Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Mardian.
Yes.
Commissioner Marion.
Yes.
Commissioner Stepanian.
Yes.
And Chair Adrian.
Yes.
I'm so sorry.
You're protected in the district.
Yeah. If I can add something that may influence or inform our discussion that we're going to have sometime within the next few months about the Mills Act, one of the things some other cities do is extend the potential of getting a Mills Act contract to contributing structures in historic districts. Currently, our district ordinance doesn't do that, and that will be one of the items that I bring into the discussion for the Commission to think about, so that brings up the possibility that it could work within our districts also as an incentive, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jay, item number, item C.
We're only on the third item. All right. We are looking at 1545 Cleveland Road. This is another property that was identified in the Cumberland Heights Historic District Survey in 2004 for the district that, as you know, didn't get designated. We're looking at a Monterey Revival-style house that was built in 1930. It's a, not an exactly rare architectural style in Glendale, but it's not very common either, and this is a very nice example of the style. The real character-defining feature of the style is this partial second-floor balcony that's sheltered by the main roof that covers the main body of the house. When you look at that balcony, in some cases, it can be a full-length balcony, most often it's a partial-length balcony. And then this house brings something interesting into the mix that you don't usually see on the Monterey's with the port cachet extending under the second floor of the house. So you actually have the driveway leading to the rear garage as part of the structure of the house with the sheltered area under the port cachet, so people can get out in the rain and walk into the kitchen with their stuff. We haven't seen this in any of our other properties in Glendale, although some period Revival-style houses do use or incorporate the port cachet. And the house has a bunch of other... houses do use or incorporate the port cachet. And the house has a bunch of other character-defining features of the style, the low-pitched red tile roof. And I should note that in Monterey Revival, there are two kind of subtypes. There's a Spanish Colonial Revival subtype, which this house meet, or, you know, has that style. And then there's also more of a American Colonial Revival or even a Minimal Traditional style. And I'll show you a few examples of those in a few slides. We're located over on Cleveland Road. And did I say Cumberland before? Maybe, maybe. Hopefully, hopefully, I said Cleveland. But for the record, we're on Cleveland Road. The house is on a huge double lot that extends to the rear, and you can see it called out here on the Cumberland Heights survey map. At the time of the survey in 2004, the house was determined to be a 5B, meaning the survey team felt that it was individually eligible for listing on the Glendale Register and that it would also be a contributing structure in a potential historic district. Of course, that district never happened, but we still have the determination of individual eligibility. And as I mentioned with the previous house on Cumberland, I give a fair amount of deference to our professional colleagues who do our surveys. And when, when they find something to meet certain criteria for the city, it would be hard, but not impossible for me to go against that. But in the case of this house, I do think it meets the criteria for listing on the Glendale Register. You can see the house here in 2004, at the time of the survey, and the current house, and you should note, and I think it's pretty obvious, that the current owners are doing some landscaping work. So the front lawn is no longer there. But you'll also see that the original concrete driveway that ran straight down from the street through the port cachet was taken out, and a new driveway was added, which is kind of interlocking cement pavers. And the driveway was then extended to form a semicircular driveway through what was once the front portion of the lawn. Other than that, the front of the house hasn't undergone too many changes. The shutters that you see in the upper photo were replicated in kind by the current owners. And the, I think I, actually, let's look at a few of the original details. I love this post supporting the roof on the balcony. It's just a beautiful example of really simple but elegant woodworking. And then these kind of decorative beams that come out to support the, the second-floor balcony. I wanted to call your attention to a couple of other changes that were made at the front of the house. First is this little roof section over the port cachet, where you see the Spanish tile roof was actually added, and I don't have the date in front of me. I think it was in the 1970s by a previous owner, sometime by a previous owner. And it has the unfortunate effect of obscuring kind of an original stucco detail that you can see in the upper right-hand photo, whether it's this little series of kind of blind arches that run along as a decorative motif. The gates that are currently in the port cachet opening, to my eye, aren't original. If there were gates there from the period of the house when it was built in 1930, I think there would have been more heavier wrought iron work and really had more handwork than these currently show. And then the current owners put in the front door, which is a lovely door and meets the character, or matches the character of the house, but you should note is not one of the original features of the house. The owners have recently completed a fair amount of work at the rear of the property. Let me first call your attention to the chimney, which is, was done by a previous owner, and we'll talk about that more in a bit. That's the original location of a chimney that was rebuilt after some earthquake damage. The extent of the current work campaign by the owners is the, what you see in the lower right-hand picture. It's basically an extension of the rear wing of the house. So they brought the rear wing back toward the rear of the property, including a master suite at the second floor and some family-room space at the lower floor. And then they created a covered porch at the, kind of the junction between the two wings. Earlier, and you may see some, I believe you'll see some slides of some of the work that had been done by previous owners, there were some sliding-glass doors. There was a strange balcony in an area that I'll show you in a second. So a lot of the work that you're looking at now replaces some very inappropriate work on the house that was done under previous ownerships. One of the issues that I have with this house is not whether it meets the criteria for Glendale Register standing, but whether it meets the, kind of the goals of our Mills Act program. And my concern here is that so much work has been done to the house, even though in many cases, the work is very, the quality of the work is, is quite good, that it really does interfere with the historic integrity of the house in terms of what we're really seeing, the dates to the original 1930 design. And then I also have a few issues with the actual detailing of some of the new work, even though I say it looks good, which I believe it does. The balcony opening at the second floor has kind of a false beam with false corbels. And there's a long tradition in Spanish architecture of having false structural elements. But in this case, they, these don't even appear to be supporting anything. They appear to be inserted into an existing, framed-out, modern kind of opening in the wall there. And then on the, the same thing on the right-hand picture where the covered patio is, you can see the decorative beams running between the columns, but then there's another structural beam standing, rising on top of those. So it's the kind of detailing that, when I look at it, if this house had been designated and then the owners came to us and said, we'd like to do this work, we can always approve new work on designated properties. But I think what we would get through the designation and through a Mills Act contract, had it been done prior to the work, would have been kind of a finer-tuned set of, you know, elements to the house that would have reflected the Secretary of the Interior standards as well as our goals with the Mills Act program. So a lot of what I'm talking about is, is relatively subtle. But I think it's important for us to think about what we want the Mills Act program to do. And one of the goals of the program is to encourage owners to do ongoing maintenance and work in exchange for getting the tax benefit. And in the case of this house, we have so much of the work has already been done that there's kind of, it's kind of almost working the process a little backwards. The owners are going to have a presentation to. Obviously, they don't agree with my opinion on that, which is fine, of course. And so they'll, they'll discuss that a little more. But just to finish showing you a few of the details, the red line I drew there is the approximate location of where the addition begins and then comes forward toward the camera. And then you can see the room above the, above the port cachet. That area was previously infilled with a second-floor balcony that I haven't yet seen the pictures of. But evidently, it's a very good thing that that's not there anymore. So a lot of the work that the owners have done is in the spirit of the house. A lot of the window replacements that they've done, they had new wood windows milled to match the existing windows on the house. So I don't want to suggest in any way that the work they've done is, is not in the spirit or in thinking about the house. But it isn't, to my mind, at the level that we expect, something that would be a Mills Act property, since that is our highest level of preservation. Here's an over, overhead shot just to see the property, and you can see how extensive it is. The original garage was actually torn down without a permit by some previous owner, and we don't know when that happened. But that would have been back in this location, most likely. And then there's a small, kind of older-looking structure that we don't know much about that serves as kind of a guesthouse in the backyard that's still on the property. I'll show you in this photo. The right-hand photo shows the little guesthouse tucked over on the side. And then this is the new garage built by the current owners under the work campaign that we've been looking at. And again, restoring the presence of a garage to the site is completely appropriate. If we were working on this with the owners under a Mills Act contract, the design might have been somewhat different in terms of the roof shape and some of the detailing. But overall, it's definitely a well-done garage. And then another tangential issue, it's not something that we review too much, is just the landscape choices in the backyard, where there's some artificial turf, which we certainly don't want to encourage people to wastewater or, you know, break the law. But it just raised some questions for me that I just wanted to point out to you so you could consider. Finally, there's the issue of this chimney, which a previous owner installed. This used-brick palette with the white bricks mixed in with the bright red bricks is really something that's not characteristic of any of our kind of Spanish or Monterey Revival properties from the '30s. And whatever decision you make regarding Glendale Register designation or Mills Act contract approval, I would recommend that the Commission require or ask the owner to stucco over the chimney so that it's more in keeping with chimneys of the period. And I think they're happy to do that if you decide to go forward with the nomination. Finally, I just wanted to show you, in terms of making the eligibility determination under the Register, I pulled out all of the Monterey Revival properties that were identified in the Cumberland Heights survey, which was about five, over 500 houses were surveyed. And we have nine houses that were identified in this style. And we only have three others that were identified in the Spanish kind of sub-style of this. The house on the top, to my, to my eye, falls into the Spanish style. My guess is that it once had a Spanish tile roof that was since removed, but I can't say for sure. What's interesting about 610 Highland is that when it was surveyed for the Cumberland Heights survey, it was considered to be a non-contributor to a historic district because of the wing on the right side that was added. When we came back to do the Art Even Highlands Historic District Survey, the surveyors working with me kind of looked at that and said, no, we don't think that that really detracts from the overall aspect of the house as Monterey Revival. So we kind of raised its status to a district contributor, but not to being individually eligible. So here are then two other examples of the Spanish variant of the style, one in Art Even Highlands and one just in the Cumberland Heights survey area. And then here are five of the examples that kind of fall into the Colonial Revival and even more so Minimal Traditional kind of variation, where they're all marked by the balcony running across part of the facade. But you can see that this subtype definitely has a different character overall than the house we're considering today. So in terms of its relative rareness in the neighborhood and the fact that it does really retain a lot of design integrity overall, I felt that it does look like it's one of the best examples in the area and that it has outstanding kind of design features and details. In terms of the Mills Act, I was concerned that there were too many alterations and that those alterations had kind of either obscured or taken away too much of the original historic fabric for us to say that it has the integrity that we would, the material integrity that we'd hope a Mills Act property would have. And that is everything I have for you.
Okay. Jay? Yeah. Could you go back to the garage that they added?
Mm-hmm.
For a moment? Okay, can you now, it's a hip roof design. Now, could you go back to one of your front views of the home again?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Is that hip design occur anywhere else in the house, or did I miss?
No, that, that was my main, you know, design concern, that usually on these period revival houses, the roof structure of the garage kind of matches the roof structure of the house. And it's a subtle difference, but had we had a chance to kind of comment on it.
You also mentioned the house was a contributor?
It was to, to the district that wasn't designated. So it was identified as a potential contributor to a potential historic district.
So when those, when these improvements were made, it wasn't considered a contributor at that time?
No, no, it was just a house like any other.
Well, not quite.
I had a question, Mr. Chairman.
She should have her head, I see.
Can I ask a question, since you have the photo? You said there were nine identified as Monterey, three with a subtitle of Spanish, correct?
Right, four, if we include.
And the three that we're comparing are these.
Yeah.
The Kennet Road, which I'm familiar with, 1610 I'm familiar with, I'm familiar with that. That leads me to the question of the balcony. The key defining features on these homes are this linear balcony that occurs in the front.
Right.
If you notice in all these pictures that you're showing me, the balcony floor is wood, exposed wood, exposed flooring. But, you know, my question is, is the balcony here original? Because it seems like it's been stuccoed.
That is an interesting question. I didn't, it didn't look that way to me when I was looking at it. It didn't jump out at me. But by no means am I expert, and you can't see everything when you're looking at something. I'm not sure if the owners will have.
Get another picture.
Is it front balcony?
Yeah.
Is it front balcony?
The woodwork certainly seems to be original. What I, what I've learned, my experience tells me with the period revival styles, is that architects were incredibly fluid, moving with different kind of elements and piecing them together in different ways. So it wouldn't surprise me if it wasn't wood. But I think you're right that usually it is.
But it is not forgivable for you not to see everything.
I know, I know. I'll have to tender my resignation.
Okay. Not yet.
Okay.
Tomorrow. Okay. You concluded your presentation?
I concluded.
Okay, and now we have a public hearing to open. And I think we have the owners present. And I apologize, I can't read your last, Gardner, would you please come forward and state your names once again?
My wife is going to be the first speaker.
And your address again.
Are you doing the slideshow?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I'm Valerie Gardner. I live at 1545 Cleveland Road. Thank you for having us here today. And I'd also like to thank Jay Platt and the Glendale Planning Department for taking the time to come to our house, and many of the commissioners as well, to meet with us and to write up such a thorough report. We are thrilled to be recommended for the Glendale Register of Historic Homes. However, our main reason for being here today is to talk to you about our home and why we think it should also be recommended for the Mills Act. We bought our home at 1545 Cleveland Road in April of 2008. We fell in love with the style of the house, Monterey Spanish Colonial Revival, and the expansive property, .83 of an acre. It was built in 1930 by Arthur Fryer and was originally owned by the Conklin family. Our home is a prime example of the Monterey Spanish Colonial Revival style, and it's actually pictured three times in the Glendale Design Guidelines for Residential Buildings and Adopted Historic Districts by the City of Glendale's website. So I brought this with, with me. And the three areas for which our home is listed are, for one, porches and balconies, two, windows and doors, and three, architectural details that are character-defining. And all the pictures are of the front facade, which has remained basically untouched. Both Jay Platt and Tim Gregory, who did our historical biography, said multiple times in their reports that the house is an excellent example of the Monterey Revival style, and one of a few examples in our area, as Jay just mentioned again. And on page two of Jay's report, he states that in the Cumberland Heights Historic Resource Survey of 500 homes, only nine, as you know, were identified as Monterey Revival, and only three of those were the Spanish Colonial subtype. Subtype of the three, 1545 Cleveland, Cleveland Road is one of the best examples in the survey area. So while the front facade drew us in, once we were inside, we realized that the house really needed a lot of TLC to restore it to the 1930, its original 1930 glory. Unfortunately, previous owners made changes to the inside of the house that were not congruent with the style of the house. They took out original wooden windows and French doors and replaced them with '50s and '60s and '70s, louvered windows and aluminum sliding-glass doors, as well as replacing the fireplace to a 1950s kind of slate stone design. So our goal in designing our remodel, which we did, by the way, without knowing anything about Mills Act, was to keep the original features of the Monterey Revival style intact, to create an addition that reflected the style of the home, and to restore the home to what we researched it to be its original 1930 state. Our architect used this book, Spanish Colonial or Adobe Architecture of California from 1800 to 1850, as our guide for the remodel. I don't know if anyone wants to check it out, but. And I should, I also want to note that our remodel is not, it's at the rear of the property and it's not visible from the front, other than the driveway. We're going to show the PowerPoint presentation in just a moment, but I want to address a couple of things that Jay just mentioned. He recommends that we stucco the rebuilt chimney done in 1994 after the earthquake, and we will absolutely happily do this. He has also recommended that we work with the, with a city landscaper to decide on plants and trees for the house that will be native to California and drought-resistant.
That's a requirement now.
Oh, okay, good. Well, we, we will comply, and we think it's a great idea. One of, one of his main contentions for not recommending us for the Mills Act contract is the circular driveway in the front of the house. We chose tumbled pavers instead of new-looking brick because we wanted to give a tumbled kind of aged look to the driveway. The main reason we put in the circular drive was actually to reduce the amount of grassy area in the front. Because, as you know, the City of Glendale has recently restricted our water usage, and keeping a full, huge front yard with, you know, nice-looking green grass would not happen under the, you know, we'd have to water it every day, at least in the summer. So we thought we'd be proactive by adding a driveway, reducing the size of the yard in front, and planting trees and drought-resistant plants, which we have not yet done. But we kept the beautiful existing trees. We do not, we don't plan on using the circular drive as a, as a parking area, but more as a place to exit the property. And we'd also like to appeal to the Commission to recognize that driveways are hardscape and not architecture. And we chose, we chose materials that, materials. And we chose materials that, material that would look aged and would not stand out as new. And the color we chose is very neutral and muted, so your eye is drawn to the front facade of the building and not to the driveway. So before we show you the presentation, I just want to conclude that we hope the commission will grant us both a designation on the Historic Register as well as for the Mills Act. We know that the main purpose of offering owners of historic homes a property tax break is to give them incentive to put the money back into the house, and that is certainly the case with us. It is expensive to maintain wooden windows. Tile roofs are expensive should it need, you know, to be redone at some point. The magnesite, although it's in the interior, it also needs to be restored. The poolhouse is in a state of disrepair and would need to be redone. So upkeep on the house would be done, obviously, in authentic manner. We love our home and will maintain it beautifully. Right now, it is not protected. So please consider this magnificent example of Monterey Spanish Colonial Revival for both Historic Registry as well as the Mills Act recognition.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hard to follow back.
Just use the arrow.
Would you like to see where it's listed on the Glendale website?
I have it in the book.
Would you state your name, please?
Yes, it's Evan Gardner, and the property address is 1545 Cleveland Road. First of all, I'd like to say, very impressed with Jay Platt's report. I read it thoroughly, found it extremely interesting, and obviously, a lot of time was put into that, so thank you very much. First view is of the property. You can see that landscaping has not been done. We were just about ready to work with that, and Jay had told me when we met last month that we needed to comply with a designated plant list, so we went on Be Water Wise. Just got that last week, so we're already researching the trees and shrubs and everything that we're going to put into it and hopefully make it as equally beautiful as the lady before, which is quite wonderful. So this is the first street view of the house. I wanted to take a photo of this. I know it's kind of an innocuous feature, but you can see that downspout, and that was one of the original downspouts. The house had two or three of them, and when we went to repaint the house, they almost fell apart. So most people probably would have put in some, you know, galvanized downpipes and probably not put a lot of thought or time into that. But we spent an enormous amount of money just to rebuild those and to make those look original. And as you can see, it is just a detail, but I keep hearing from the, you know, from the folks up here that details are important, and I want you to know that details are equally as important to us. One of the next photos I'm going to show you are, here's another street view to kind of show you the grandeur of the house. If you, did anybody take the opportunity to kind of drive by? I know Mr. Armenian did.
I did.
Okay. So I think from the street, pictures really don't do a lot of justice. I think from the street, it's a fairly beautiful house, and some people have referred to it as a grand dame of Glendale for whatever that means, but we think it's quite impressive. I took a picture of the, this is, of the shutters. The shutters were in horrible condition, and we spent a lot of money and a lot of time to rebuild those shutters and did a lot of research to really make them look as authentic as possible. In fact, I think they're probably back to their very original state. So that was a lot of detail involved in doing that. I took a picture of the front door. The original door, when we moved in, I should say, as is, was horrible. I mean, it was a.
It was not original.
It was not original door. So we did a lot of research on the web and through books and through recommendations and found the door that probably was identical to the original door and had a custom-made to do that. I even went on eBay and found the door knocker from a 1930s door knocker. So we really have spent a lot of time, and all the changes that we made, obviously, to the front of the house have been as congruent as possible. Jay, I don't think was very impressed with the rear patio and some of the corbels that we had done. The attempt was made to really make it look as authentic as possible. Unfortunately, the engineering department in Glendale forced us to, you know, use materials that probably weren't like the original, but you probably couldn't build with current building codes, original patios like this. But we did do everything that we can to make hip roofs and everything look as though it were original, and I hope that comes through. That little boy right there, I know that one of the criteriums is having somebody of historical value. That little boy is going to be your historical value right there. That's my little son. This is just another picture of some of the corbels. I wanted to show this, I wanted to see that magnolia tree, which, I don't know if you, anybody here are tree lovers, but we happen to love, that tree is our baby. But we, all the trees and the landscaping were in horrible disarray. I mean, horrible. So we hired an arborist to come in, not a tree cutter, not a tree trimmer, but an arborist to come in and restore the trees. As you can see, that tree is, even though it's in the back of the house, you can see quite a bit of it from the front. We painstakingly kind of, I don't know if you can rebuild a tree, but did everything that we can to make that, those trees on the property, look as beautiful as possible and make them as healthy as possible. Interior, I know, is not terribly important, but magnesite, this house, one of the things that Valerie and I, my wife and I, fell in love with the house is the beautiful magnesite inside. It needs some work. These pictures aren't the greatest, we're not professional photographers, but we have done a lot of work to try and maintain. The magnesite's still work in progress. They have not colored it yet. In fact, that picture back there probably is better on the monitor. But we plan to completely restore the magnesite. That magnesite is throughout the entryway and also the stairs leading into our living room. Just want to give you another shot of some of the original railings. This is an archway going into our living room. The addition that we made, we used the same very thick walls and same kind of arch designation for any place that we had put that. I did a few before and after shots, and I know Jay was very kind to point out that the house originally probably had some very significant problems. But this was the kitchen when we, when my wife and I bought the house. You can see it's got some aluminum bay windows or garden windows, some probably 70s or 60s tile. And here's the kitchen today. We have used Spanish Revival tile throughout the house. The windows have all been replaced with a correct period. The windows were rebuilt. Some of the house, they had put in doors that had one and a quarter muttons to it. We had all the ones that were incorrect corrected with custom-made doors and windows that had the correct seven-eighth muttons in there. So we, you know, I think we did a lot of research on that. This was the living room when we moved in. A wonderful room, but probably somewhere in the 50s, they had rebuilt that fireplace and the hearth. Took a lot of the charm out of the house. Again, did a lot of research before we did it, and this is what we came up with. So you can see that we've added a lot of the original character to it, put a mahogany mantle on there and original stone for the hearth, and I think we've restored the living room back to its grandeur. Here's another before shot, kind of hard to see, but this was the dining room. That's a glaring picture of an aluminum window to the left, which you really can't see, with a huge, probably eight or 10-foot sliding glass door. Don't know when it was done, but this is what it looks like now. Note the arch in there. Doors on the left, doors straight ahead, all wood. We did not, we had the opportunity to put in clad doors and windows. We were told that the maintenance on those would be significantly less. We decided to go the extra mile and to do wood doors and windows. We wanted to note, this picture notes the balcony. If you see the door on the very left, that goes off to that balcony that was all, who knows when it was done. The next picture will kind of show you what I'm talking about. That is the balcony. So when we moved in, off that bedroom over the portischer, that was the balcony on there. It was a disaster, an absolute disaster. It took a lot of engineering and architecture to figure out how to correct that to make it look as period correct as possible. This was the same room, that same bathroom, same little famous boy right there. So you can see the big sliding glass door. There's also another photo where you can see that it had, you know, 1970s dowel tile 101 with louvered windows. And this is what it looks like today. So we've changed out the windows, we put in period correct tile work throughout the house. If you're familiar with Mission Tile Pasadena, that's what they specialize in is Spanish Revival tile. We had taken, we noticed from the staff report that the driveway was noted, and we wanted to address that as much as possible. Again, we looked into the Mills Act after most of this work had been done. May have changed our minds had we known about this, but we didn't. So we took some prominent houses, one of which was in the staff report as one of the model, or the three best homes of the Monterey Spanish Revival. This one has a circular driveway. This is a, I believe, a Mills Act on Columbus circular driveway. This is a house on Virginia, which also has the interlocking tile and also circular driveway. Sorry, we're not professional photographers. And this is, I believe, a Mills house as well on Kenneth Road. The Gone with the Wind house also has a circular driveway.
If that didn't have one, we'd be upset.
Okay. Same thing. So we just cited some examples of circular driveways. As my wife noted, we did it for a few different reasons. One, we had to, we had such huge frontage on this house that if we were to do it all landscaping, we would have not been able to maintain the house from a water standpoint. So we worked within the formulation that Glendale mandates, put in a driveway that would help reduce that and give us ample room for, you know, shrubs and, you know, proper landscaping. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Bring me my keyboard. Bring me my keyboard.
Is Mr. Gregory coming forward? Is Mr.?
Don't encourage him. What's the matter with you? I don't think there's more you could say.
He's telling me don't encourage him.
Don't encourage him. I'm going to close the public hearing now. Okay. All right. Any questions? Should have asked if there were any questions of the owner before I closed the meeting.
Maybe the staff can answer.
Maybe the staff can answer. I got a question.
When do you anticipate this landscaping work to be done?
We're working on it.
We're waiting for the weather to.
So, what, another five months, three months?
No, I would say, we've already looked at trees.
Two months.
Yeah. I would say the next 60 days, sure.
Okay.
Okay. We have to get up for that.
That's it. Thank you.
Fix it official.
All right, sorry. It's good exercise for you. You have any questions?
No. Okay.
Have a question.
I have no question, Mr. Chairman.
Questions and no comments?
No, I do have some comments, but no questions. I don't know when the comment period comes, then I'll comment.
When you raise your hand.
You are a official.
I have a question for Jay. I don't know if you have a slide of that portischer again?
Oops, hold on.
There's a gate there. I just wanted to get another look at that. It was sort of, is that authentic?
Gate?
Gate.
My opinion is no.
We don't have a record of it.
It was, yeah, there. Closest we come, I guess.
The style of the metalwork is not the kind of hand wrought iron that you would see from a house from this period. These big kind of curlicues are actually pieces of flat metal that are applied to the vertical pieces rather than being bent and twisted themselves. And the shape of it also doesn't follow the opening. If there had been a gate here, which I'm not even sure there would have been, but if there was, the shape would probably be more responsive to the archway.
But it's a wrought iron material, isn't it?
It's modern iron. Yeah, it's iron.
Ironwork.
Yeah, it's definitely.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. You said, this is in the report, I think, one of the two best remaining? One of, or the second best remaining?
It's one of the group, and when I wrote the report, I didn't include this house as one of the Spanish, so I thought it was of these three. I thought this lower one was an excellent example, and I thought the house we're talking about today. In both cases with these, if this one was a Spanish subtype, which I only think it was because of the shape of the doorway and just the general form of the house, it doesn't have that American Colonial Revival look. So I wonder if it had a Spanish roof originally. And this one, which is also a lovely house, just kind of doesn't pull all the features together as well as the others.
Okay. Cito, you have any comments?
I don't have any comments.
No comments?
No, I mean, comments or deliberating on the project?
I think we can discuss the project.
Discuss.
Let's discuss the project.
Okay. Okay, if you want to go ahead now. I can go ahead.
Go right ahead.
Let me start by saying that I am in agreement with staff halfway through, not totally. And that disagreement is designating the building as Historic Resource and not allowing for the Mills Act. I see that not compatible decision-making. If the building is good, then it's good for the other one as well, in my opinion. But what I'm looking at in reality is a lot of additions to the building, a lot of changes, big-time changes which affects the historic character of the building. The only thing that is remaining to look as historical, historic element is the long street facade, which is gorgeous. The inside of the house, of course, I have had opportunity to go in, and I'd like to apologize, I came to your house on a wrong day, but anyway, thank you for allowing me to come in. But what we are looking is just a long facade, which is very beautiful. But then, as we start looking at the building, we see the changes, the changes, though the attempt is there to make, make the changes in a manner that fits the building or whatever remains of it, they are not still there. It's obvious and it looks like there are additions. The other thing that I kind of, it just kind of bothers me is the landscaping of the building. I also like to see a building which is designated historic to have something else going with it besides just the facade. I like to see some landscaping, some mature trees. I do not know, when you do the landscaping, whether the planting will be five gallons or 15. I do not know at this time. You might say they will be the largest, but as a juror today, I do not know. I'm looking to a building that the only thing right now appeals me is the front facade. Everything else is addition, and additions are not done very well. So if this building comes back at a later date with landscaping done fully, I might be able to consider and discuss it. But at this time, I would not support the designation as recommended by staff, and also, I'll go along with the others' recommendation, which is not to go into the Mills Act. That is where I am now.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Marion? Is that the, did you say you had something you wanted to add? Nothing?
Mr. Chair, if I may, are you asking us to continue? Is that your?
No, 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 no. I am not, I was just trying to drink some water.
That's okay.
I am not asking that. I'm saying that at this time, I have really, not, I don't have much to support the recommendation.
Another question I had to you, Mr. Chairman, what changes are you talking about in the front? I know there's a lot of changes, additions in the back.
No, no, the front, I am not suggesting there are changes. No, the front is intact and it's very beautiful. But beyond that, whatever I see is half.
Something is missing because of the landscape, in my opinion, but that's, I'll save my comments when I time.
Thank you.
Is there a matter of?
Well, there aren't too many of us up here. But I have a question. I want to, I want to pick up on what Commissioner Marion mentioned about the landscaping, and I want to direct it to Jay. I don't know how the applicant was, was, what kind of advice they were given, but they obviously, they brought the project to us with no landscaping, and it's pretty obvious. Are we, were we expected to overlook what was proposed for landscaping, or were we supposed to read into that, or what was the intention there?
In general, our designations don't cover landscaping unless we identify specific landscape features as being significant to the historic character of the property, which gives people flexibility in the future to make changes or for plants to die and new ones to come in. In this case, I did think it was unusual, but the owners did want to stay on the schedule to qualify for the Mills Act ultimately. And then during the course of this, Glendale went into the water rationing program where all new landscaping had. all new landscaping had to meet the be-water-wise requirements. So, you know, the expectation is we don't know exactly what's coming, except that it's going to be drought tolerant. It would be preferable to know. But again, it's landscaping isn't something that we're going to be regulating, even if this house is designated, so...
Okay. That answers my question.
Excuse me, clarify, we're not regulating landscape? I thought the whole thing was one piece.
Well, for, no, it's kind of complicated, because we would be regulating landscaping if someone were proposing a new construction inside the historic district. And you have purview now to say, we want to come back and we want to look at the landscape plan or have that reviewed with staff. But in general, if a house were designated already, and the owner said, I want to change out my, you know, the hedge and put in a flower bed, unless that had been identified as a significant hedge in the historic report for the structure, for the house, we wouldn't really have any say in that.
But clearly here, the streetscape has changed.
Oh, I agree, and I think the circular driveway, and by calling attention to the driveway, it doesn't mean that circular driveways are inherently bad or nonhistoric. It just means it wasn't, there wasn't one on this house previously.
Okay, let me, let me...
What, did you want to say something?
No, no, go ahead then.
I was going to say that, so what you were, are you inferring then, I don't want to read into your comments, but are you saying that we would eventually see the landscape plan come back to us once it was in?
You could ask, you could ask for that specifically. You could also postpone a decision until you saw the plan. Right now, you have, you know, a few different options with the landscape. So my comments are basically thinking in terms of how we regulate landscape in the future. There are no permits required for landscaping. Obviously, if someone wanted to pave over their front yard, there'd be other zoning issues as well as preservation issues that would address that. And there are certain minimum maintenance requirements for landscapes that are citywide. They don't just apply to historic structures.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just like to clarify what I said. I did not, I did not say that the applicant come back, so we judge it for landscaping.
All I said is landscaping, in my judgment... Okay, no, let me just go back. I am supporting, not recommending for the Mills Act, and I'm not supporting for designation.
Right.
That will not change. If it comes back with new landscaping design, it might change, but no guarantee.
So as a new application...
As a new application, if they decide, I will look at it. But right now, I am very comfortable with the decision that I have made.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I say my comments?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's interesting that, you know, I felt the same way when I first saw this house, something was missing. But how do we go about, this may be a question or comment, you know, discussion, it's in our design guideline. This particular house is an example that we lead to when we say, what's a Monterey style? The, I mean, I didn't go specifically looking for this, but I just wanted to see the details of what makes a Monterey or a sub-Spanish. And it just happened after a few minutes, I said, wow, this is the same one that is in our guidelines. Now, are we saying, if we don't designate this, how do we go about applying these guidelines if this is not a designated property? I mean, I don't know if you understand.
I think the facade, this is the front of the house, correct?
Correct, yeah.
I don't think that applies to what happened, was been happening to the rear of the house.
Well, rear of the house, we're not discussing the rear house, because we're kind of, to my understanding, is what's visible from the street. They could still add to the rear of the house. I actually, I mean, the addition might not be pleasing in the back, but it's in the back of the house. The only thing I see is the chimney that is detracting.
For Glendale registered property, we look at the full parcel.
I understand, but, full parcel, but we, I mean, we mostly concern what's from visible. I mean, we have to look at it as a whole.
That's the cut off for historic districts. In a historic district, we only look at what's visible from the street.
So if we don't designate this house, how do we apply the guidelines when somebody says, well, this is the type of Monterey style?
May I just talk?
It's the front view, though.
That's right.
That's just for the front view. That's the guideline for the front, which is, which is very, I mean, I think it's beautiful. You can't deny it.
It's beautiful, I'm not questioning, that's why I'm kind of being hesitant.
I know, thank you for helping me.
I'm speaking for Commissioner Marion, maybe I should let him speak for himself, so...
Can I try to explain it again?
Okay.
Try to kind of, guideline, guidelines or guideline of a building does not necessarily mean that building is historical. It will be a beautiful building, it will be magnificent, but not historical. Often in this commission, we make a mistake. We go with the design and we think that we are discussing design of a building, we are discussing whether that building is historic or not. So in this case, we have it in the guidelines, it is just wonderful, because it is a beautiful building. And they are not discussing the back of it, they are not discussing anything else.
I agree with you there. I agree, I agree what you said, 100% we're looking at history, historical value of the house. But going back, the reason I'm being a little hesitant, we clearly in this discussion were saying it's one of the two remaining ones left, you know. If we don't designate, somebody else might come in future, might even alter it further. So we lose that, you know.
And if I...
Go ahead.
Two things. In terms of the survey area that I looked at was just the Cumberland Heights survey, which is 500 houses. According to our ordinance, we'd actually have to look beyond that to the full Glenmont neighborhood. So I put that in more for your information. We actually do have, it's rare for us to have that much survey data about any area in Glendale. So it was kind of a relative point. And then, given the rarity of the style, I didn't think, from what I know of the rest of that area, that there were going to be so many other examples. But I'm hesitant to pull it down to, you know, if there are only two, because there could be some outside the boundary. And then in terms of the choices made by the consultant who created the guidelines, a lot of cities don't even use examples when they're trying to call out architectural features or something like that. They'd leave their city to just show these are typical features of this style. So I don't think, the fact that we did use some Glendale buildings, and I'm not even sure if they all are, doesn't mean that that building is specifically significant, it just means that this balcony itself is typical of the Monterey Revival.
Having said that, I mean, I, I'm not supportive of this application. I agree with Mr. Marion, it's either both or none. I mean, and I'd like to give the benefit of the doubt to the applicant to come back and see this house landscape. I'm not saying, you know, what my colleagues think at that time, but I think we should see the whole thing. To me, it's coming with a designation without landscaping or proposed landscaping, I have a problem with that. And I do strongly feel that the balcony here has been altered. I think I mentioned that when my question, because the, I might be wrong, but that's my feeling, because typically on this Monterey style, the balcony flooring is...
Exposed?
Exposed.
Exposed decking.
Exposed decking, correct. And that's the whole, I mean, that's what, I mean, I can fix the chimney, I can stucco it, make it work, but I don't think it's a, it's a beautiful house. I agree with the, there's no question. I feel better looking at this when the landscaping is done, in my opinion. But one comment, I'm going to go back, with all due respect to Mr. Gregory, some of the reports that I've read over the last four and a half years that I've been here, it's duplicate, you know, especially in this case, where we talk about there's no architect. I mean, give me a little more. I mean, I don't know how you double check on these things, but it is just one page taken out of another, you know, report. I mean, the wording is the same. I would not, with no disrespect to you at all, I know sometimes it gets, you know, a little hard, but, you know, change the paragraph, do something, don't bore me.
And so in some ways, I think that paragraph is probably for the owner's benefit, because everyone's hoping that they find that, you know, some master architect designed their house, and then this kind of explains, hey, you're not alone. It's kind of normal, so...
But other than that, I'm willing to support this when the landscaping is done. The fact that, you know, even though if we say, okay, we'll attach Mills Act to it, but again, I'm looking at this work program for the Mills Act, it talks about interior work and backyard addition, doesn't talk about upkeep on the building in the front. I'm concerned really in the front of this house, because it's like three left of this or whatever, four left, you know, the number is minimal. So I'm willing, eventually I'm looking at protecting this. But I like to see it when the landscaping is done, because in the old pictures, this, you know, it has more lush front landscape. I understand there's water issues and drought resistant plants, but looking at both is totally, detracts away from the house. That's where I stand on it.
Okay.
Seda wants to say something.
Do you want to say something?
Seda wants to say something.
Seda?
I'm just looking at the pictures before and after 2004, just comparing, looking at the picture, 2004, it has more historical value to the house, to me, than the recent one, because they just done too much remodeling as it is as of this point. Looking at the top picture, it gives you more like a historical house, having all the qualities that the house offered at the time. That's my observation, just comparing the pictures. And to me, since they already started the remodeling and they did a lot of, they just did a lot to the house itself that it took away the historical value of the house, even though the frontage is the same, but it doesn't have the historical value to me. Maybe I'm wrong, but they took away that character. I don't know, maybe.
I do agree with you, Mr. Marion.
Just comparing the pictures, and I drove by the house, and it's been taken away from the value of the historical point of view. I'm not saying the house itself most probably now has a lot more to offer as a remodeled house, but it doesn't have that historical value to the house, to me. Maybe I'm wrong, but...
Would you say lost, it's, you're saying sentimental value?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hang on one second? Yeah, okay. We'll get back, we'll get, we'll let you talk one second. Okay. I've got a couple of things just to mention, and then, Jay, I want to ask you about the Mills Act again. You started saying something just a little while ago, when we mentioned that the front of the house was what we sort of concentrate on when it's a historic...
Historic.
In a historic district. But when we, when recommend, when the recommendation goes in for a Mills Act, we look at the entire...
For the Glendale Register, we look at the entire, we look at hardscape areas, we look at landscaped areas. What I was trying to say about the landscaping is we don't regulate what planting styles and types and actual plants are put in. If someone wanted to change their, you know, the configuration of a formal, formally laid-out backyard that was designated and that was part of the designation, we'd have trouble, you know, being able to approve something like that.
Okay. I'm not, personally, I'm not too concerned about the landscaping, because I think, I think that these owners are very cognizant of what they're doing, and I think they're going to do a great job. So that doesn't really bother me too much. You made a comment about the pavers, I believe, in your presentation, the circular driveway pavers. You didn't like that because it didn't really follow the style of the home.
There was originally a concrete driveway, and, you know, generally, you know, something like that should be...
Could be brick or concrete.
Probably not even brick, that's the thing. Since we had an example of what was likely, if, you know, I can't say for sure, it's likely it was the original condition, when you know what that is, that gives you the back, the backing to make decisions.
But that's not really a very large situ, that's not a big item, though, right?
No, and my recommendation was based on the whole package.
In the pecking order, it doesn't really, you know, it's on the sort of the bottom of the list, isn't it, when you're getting the pavers versus concrete, dah 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 dah?
Yeah, let's put it down lower.
Now, let's go to the other items, which I just want to, for myself, is the addition in the back, I think you paid close attention to the detailing of the corbels and the false beams that were set, and those are things where we're really negative, because we don't like to approve things that aren't what they appear to be, if they're...
In general, there are many options when you do a rear addition like that. They could have done something that was quite modern looking, that would have been acceptable under the secretary's standards and are what we're looking for.
Is that, would that be an item that you think we could pursue as far as a remake or redo?
I doubt the owners are interested in restarting over there.
Okay. Well, I like the house very much. I think, personally, in my opinion, it's a beautiful home, and you've done a tremendous job inside. I mean, it's just no doubt. I don't, I don't agree with my colleagues when they mention the fact that there's, except for the chimney, which when I drove by and I stopped, I said, that, that can't work, you know, and we talked about that, and stucco is a good idea, and that would be fine. I think it's a good example, I don't think there are that many in Glendale, two or three or four, but I think it's a, it's a very nice home. The only other thing I would, is the addition, the patio area where you had the, was it a beam, and then below you had a sub-beam that was a false corbel beam? Yeah, I didn't, I don't like that either. I don't think that's appropriate, and I don't know if you can do anything about it now or wish to do anything about it. I think that's the only thing. But in terms of the house on a whole, all the windows are wood, all the doors are wood, the original, you made the effort for the front door to make that style authentic as much as you could. So I'm really kind of, I'm, I think it's, I think it's a very nice project. You've done a tremendous job. Yes, it would have been nicer if you came to us with the landscaping in and the trees, whatever they were. You probably would have gotten my two colleagues here on your side, but eh, I think you'll do fine. Anyway, that's my feeling. So, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, not to designate this as a historical, let me read it the way...
Oh, once, excuse me, before you start that, you mentioned you wanted to make a comment. Did you still want to make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I'll reopen the public hearing.
I just wanted to explain a little bit also about the landscaping. When we went into escrow on the home, there were some title issues, and we were in escrow for almost 10 months. During that time, the previous owners turned off the water, killing that beautiful lush landscaping that you saw. The grass died. The trees are still there, and as my husband mentioned, we pruned, I mean, the trees on the property are magnificent. What we did take out from the front yard was the rat-infested ivy that we removed. And we felt like, when we met with Jay and we had not yet done the landscaping, we felt like we wanted to bring to you a clean slate so that we could say, yes, we realized that you would have some input in what we did in terms of landscaping, and we want to wait until we find out all the appropriate plants and trees. I mean, we're going to create an incredible front yard, I guarantee it. We wouldn't put so much love and effort and money into our home and just have a disaster for a front yard. So maybe we should have waited a year, I don't know, but I just want you to know that our intentions are to create an amazing looking property, and you will feel nostalgic about it, I promise.
And you're working with the staff to design the front yard?
That's our plan. We are going to, you know, get a...
We can advise, yeah, at this point, all we advise them, knowing they were going to do landscaping. I wasn't sure that they were aware that the city had official rules about which plants can be used and what you can't do, so we wanted to make sure they weren't breaking any laws, so...
But we do, we plan on...
Yeah, we don't have expertise personally or, you know, on staff specifically for that kind of guidance, so.
But they will be approved plans.
We could help with other city employees or available, so...
Yeah, and we're planning on putting some mature trees in. We just started tree shopping, so some beautiful old olives and other trees that are on the list, approved list, so, thank you.
We've only been in the house for three months, by the way.
Yeah, we just moved in at the beginning of the summer.
Okay. You, okay.
Yeah, so, like I said, that's...
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Closing the public hearing again.
I was going to make a motion, I don't know how that goes with my colleagues, is to continue this item and review it after the property has been landscaped.
I will not support that motion. I will not support that motion.
Make it.
I'll make a motion to continue this item after the landscape has been installed.
I'm going to ask.
Is that a second? Ask for a second.
You have to ask.
Yes, do I have a second to the motion? I'll second it.
You can't.
You can't, you have to step down.
Oh. Do I hear a second? Okay.
Motion dies.
Motion dies, all right.
Somebody else make another motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion.
A new motion?
Yes. Or you can make the new motion if you want.
I can make a new motion, is to send this back. If they feel like they want to come back in the future with a new application, that's fine with me.
No, no, that's not a motion.
I understand, but I want to, I'll, I'll, okay, I'll make the motion not to recommend that the city council designate this property at 1545 Cleveland Road as a historic resort and list, and not to list this in the registry of historic, so based on the finding identified. And also, staff, I concur with staff that not to recommend the city council to authorize city manager to enter Mills Act contract with the property owner for the property tax and saving.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Maradian.
Yes.
Commissioner Amirian.
Yes.
Commissioner Spanian.
Yes.
And Chair Adrian.
No.
You have to put the gavel down and say approved.
Approved. Okay, Jay. Okay. Item number D.
I just want to make a comment.
Can we breathe?
May I just make a comment?
No.
No comment. Can we take a recess?
Yes, we can.
Who wants to make a comment first?
Make a motion for that?
Who wants to make a comment?
I, I just want to say, the house is wonderful. Tremendous amount of change, and I'd like to say I'm sorry, but I just couldn't do anything else.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
So we are in adjournment?
We can recess.
Recess till, for five minutes?
If you wish.
No, let's finish it. Let's finish.
Let's go ahead.
Let's keep it going. These poor people are waiting, and they've been waiting for.
You want some coffee or tea or something?
I just want to get up. I want to, for two minutes.
I've been sitting. Yeah, easy for you guys to say. Coming in with recommendations.
Do sit, I'm a patient, I'm a patient. I'm a voter, I'm a candidate.
Someone up front. Yeah.
We tried, oh, yeah.
Funny we make on that parking. Yeah, I think, I hope I was right.
What happened to mine?
At that time, I wasn't. Oh, I'm not signing anything you got there. You got the minutes back? Oh, I, I sign it? Because I'm the chairperson?
Well, yeah, just in case there's a cut and paste issue.
I'm trapped. Hey, Jay.
Yes, sir. I just have to get out of here because, there we go. It's trapped.
Until then, keep playing. It's recess.
That's what I'm doing.
Enjoy yourself.
Okay.
Glendale Historic Preservation Commission has been reconvening. We're on item number D, ready to hear the staff report.
This is our, our last register nomination of the day. This is a, another Spanish colonial revival. This is in the Rossmoyn neighborhood on 1220 Cortez Drive. It was built in 1928. We actually know the designer for this property, as you know, that's rare. His name was Ernest Ridenhour, who was a builder who also built the house next door to this one, which is itself a lovely example, and then I'll show you a third building that we know he designed, but we don't know anything else about his career. But what we have here is a lovely, lovely example of Spanish colonial, one of the finest that I've seen since I've been working for the city. Here, just to place it in the Rossmoyn neighborhood, it's over on the east side of Cortez Drive. One of the previous owners had a wonderful photo album of the house so that we can see certain parts of it as they looked in the late 40s, and we can see certainly since that time, the house, the outside hasn't changed much. And it really does pull together so many of the key character defining features of Spanish colonial revival, and does it in a really kind of unique way, that for me in making the staff assessment is fairly clear compared to some of the previous items we've heard today, that this really does meet the standards and criteria we have for the register. Just for a little context, here's another building Ernest Ridenhour did, the old Golden Bear Club, which wasn't the Golden Bear when he designed it in the 20s, but this was in Huntington Beach, and it was torn down sometime in the last 10 years or so. But it shows some interesting aspects of Spanish design, not, not kind of cookie cutter by any means. You know, the key feature when you're looking at this house from the street is this amazing entryway with the tile that's been identified as Moro Hispanic or Hispano-Moresque, excuse me, and much of the tile.
Spell that?
What's that?
Can you spell that?
Later. But a, a lot of the tile on the house has been, is in one of the guides to architectural tile work in Southern California and has been identified by its maker, so in some ways the house is a little bit of a museum of different kind of tile techniques. And then you have the front door also with just that incredibly intricate paneling, so you have a very kind of psychedelic entry experience going into the house. Coming around the side and the back of the house, you see, you know, a lot of other character defining features of the Spanish colonial, and then some unique features. So you have this double height rear porch with the wood beams and corbels that are truly structurally supporting the porch. One of the interesting things here is the current owners have done a lot of restoration work on the house already, and some of this woodwork is new, but it does match pretty closely, if not identical, to the original woodwork that was there. One of the interesting features, and I don't know if anyone had a chance to actually get inside past the gate at the front, at the driveway, but you see these single pane windows in the upper photograph in the little projecting bay window. The bay, I can't say whether that's an original feature or not, but it's very unlikely that large single pane windows like that would be. It appears that this was originally in kind of a covered area because there are open planters and the flagstone paving that you see on the outside patio areas extends into this area, so it seems to be some sort of enclosure that was done at a point, but we don't have any permit record for that, and it's not even sure, clear that permits would have been required to infill those openings with glass. One of the, well, two of the most interesting features are there, there's an incinerator at the rear of the garage wing that's semi-attached to the house, that's kind of looks like an Islamic minaret, and then you have this great kind of turret at the second floor, and it's an L-shaped house, and this kind of turret serves as the hinge between the two parts, and then it's got this really interesting kind of upside down beehive reverse corbling down at the bottom that really adds character to the rear of the property. And I think you can see just the, the extension of the Spanish tile roofs and the multiple roof levels are really key aspects of the style. House is also notable for a couple of outbuildings. It's on a fairly large lot and has the original pool, actually, it's not the original pool, but it's an early addition, and then the pool house was also not built by Ridenhour, but was built sometime soon after in the 1930s. And you have the changing rooms in the little building to the right, the covered patio, and then some interesting stonework with some tile, I'll show you in a second, over on the left. And then there was also kind of a, either chauffeur's quarters or servants' quarters that was built above a detached garage. So the house has two garages, one semi-attached with a breezeway, and one that's kind of tucked back into the back corner of the property. Here's an aerial view showing you that arrange, arrangement of buildings, and so here's the driveway coming in. This is the detached garage, this is the semi-detached garage wing, and then here's the pool down here, and then in the other corner opposite the chauffeur's quarters is the little pool house. Then there's an extensive kind of series of terraces with original ironwork running through the backyard, linking the house, stepping down toward the pool. The ironwork on the house is really quite remarkable. It all appears to be original, the design motifs kind of extend from one piece to another, and it extends not just for the grills and the driveway gate, but also to the light fixtures that you see in various locations. And then just to focus on the tile work a little, there are many different types of tile on the house. The fish fountain over on the left was identified as Batshelder. You have two outdoor fireplaces, one of which at the top right you see is surrounded by this beautiful tile surround, and then you have these decorative tile plaques that I think are really interesting. The one on the bottom here was identified in one of the tile books that the researchers have looked at this house and included in the books, and shows a nice kind of romantic Spanish scene. And then you also have these two interesting plaques that look like they came later, they're almost more Art Deco style, and just very interesting use of tile work throughout the house, so that front door kind of gets you stoked to see the rest of the stuff that's coming. One thing I wanted to note, that I didn't put these photos in your staff report because they weren't coming out very well visually, but the, a previous owner had completely coated the house with kind of a texture coat surface that gave it this very rough, kind of pebbly finish, and in consultation with me, when they knew they were considering making the application, the owners came to us and said, would, you know, what kind of stucco finish is more appropriate here? So we came up with kind of a smooth textured stucco that is now on the entire house, so the, the rough texture coat is now gone. And in the case of this house, I highlighted the word exemplary because I think compared to so many of the properties I've seen, this really does rise to one of the highest levels in its attention to detail and the quality of the architecture. And again, in this neighborhood in Rossmoyn, it's very, very hard to say that something's the best Spanish style house because there are so many really good examples. I'm tempted, and I kind of was a little cagey in my staff report because it feels to me like it's really one of the better examples that I've seen in any neighborhood, but I don't think we can officially say that, but definitely exemplary details in design.
It's one of them.
And that's everything.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. It is beautiful. And I know the owners are anxious to talk about it, so would they like to step forward and Mister, get your name and your address?
My name is Al Shire, and I'm from 1220 Cortez Drive, and I'm a co-owner along with my wife, Desiree. First of all, thank you very much for, for the opportunity. This is a really exciting moment for Desiree and I. We bought the house back in August of 2007, and it was not an easy decision. At first, you know, you look at the house and you realize there is a lot to do here, and the vision that we brought to the house was really not to get in the way. I mean, we saw this house, we saw that there had been some things done to it over time, the biggest of which was the aluminum windows, the Louvre jealousy windows which had been done over time, and also the texture coat. So we knew that if we were going to buy this house, there were some significant things that we would have to do to restore it. But we, over a period of time, we decided that this was the right house for us, and it was on the market for a long time, and, and a lot of people loved the house, but were not willing to make the commitment, either emotionally or financially, to do it right. And both my wife and I, if we're going to do something, we're either going to do it right, or we're just not going to do it at all. So we took on the project and we bought the house, and it's been a labor of love. I mean, it's really been about not adding to the house, it's not about, you know, replacing, it's about bringing back, it's about restoring. And so over the period of the last two years, we've put on a new roof, which again was using all the existing tile as much as we could. Of course, things break when you do those sorts of things, so, you know, we had some new tiles that were added, and we had most of those in the backward slope of the house so they weren't visible from the street, so the street really has all original. The other big thing was there was extensive termite damage in the house as well, and so that meant opening up walls, replacing beams, replacing woodwork, and, and things like that, so we had to do a lot of that. The other big thing was windows. You know, obviously, you've heard of people say the windows are the eyes of the house looking out, and, and of course, that was the first thing that we noticed when we walked in that house, like, oh my gosh, we've got to get rid of these windows. So that was something that we did, and, and it took a while. I mean, we had researched, we actually had put an order in on some windows at a place in Burbank. Fortunately, our realtor, who had been doing some extensive restoration on her home, told us, stop the order, make sure what you're doing is exactly what they would have done in 1928. So, long story short, we had some existing windows in our guest house, which had the, the number of lights, the profile, the mullion, everything, and we basically matched those. And actually, Jay had come out to the house about a year and a half ago, and we had discussed that with him, and, and felt like, okay, we wanted to put our best foot forward because we really knew that we wanted this house to be historically designated. In many ways, we feel like we're the ones that rescued the house. We feel like we need to protect the house. We knew that when we bought the house, that it was something that was very unique and very special. I mean, Desiree and I have lived in Rossmoyn for eight years, we've lived in Glendale over 20, and we've seen a lot of homes, we've got all the open houses, and I can't tell you how many times we have gone to an open house and walked away just so disappointed with what people have done, with what is such an awesome period of Glendale's history from the 1920s to the 1930s, and Rossmoyn being such an amazing part of our history, whatever we can do to give back and preserve, something like that would be wonderful. So our goal is to get historic designation, our goal is to encourage that. We're both members of the Glendale Historical Society. Many years ago, when we lived on Cordova, because we restored a house there, and we're going to basically do the same thing, we just didn't get there, was to see Rossmoyn become a historic district. And that's a, that's a tall undertaking, and it takes a lot of people, and I think that that's still in the plans, I don't know, but I, but I know it hasn't happened yet. So what we can do as part of contributors to that vision is to start by example, lead by example, and have our home get historic designation. So you guys have seen the pictures, the house really speaks for itself. We feel like we're just the stewards of that house, and we are trying to restore it back to the original design and integrity of what that home was meant to be, and we want to protect that for future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
What presentation?
Do you want to speak or say something?
Really what I can add to that, my husband and I are on the same page here. We absolutely love the house, we're passionate about.
Your name?
Oh, sorry. Desiree Shire, 1220 Cortez. We're passionate about the house, we feel like we're the stewards of it, and we want to protect it. Just to tell you one little story about the level of detail we've done, we've done a lot of the restoration ourself because that's our love and passion. We were digging in the backyard, and my husband hit something with a shovel, like a rock, and he uncovered it, and it was a piece of base tile about four inches tall by eight inches tall, and it looked so familiar, like our entry tile, which we were missing about nine pieces of the base tile from when they put in a sliding door. So when we put back in the French door that would have been original to the house, we were missing a whole, you know, like maybe eight feet or so of tile. So I said to my husband, keep digging, there's got to be more. We recovered every single piece except for one. We had eight of the nine pieces, you know, scraped them clean, had them, you know, refi, you know, refinished and waxed, installed them back in the entryway, and we're, we're just, that's our passion, and we're excited about it, and we have no intentions to sell the house. We sure hope we get to live in it a few years after we finish it, so we can really enjoy it, but yeah, that's just, our hope is it's, it's protected for well beyond our years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. Any questions of the owners? Anyone have a question? The owners?
No, I don't have any questions, but I'm dying to talk.
I knew it, I could feel your breath, come here. I'd like to have Jay put those pictures back up on the screen of the house once again.
Which ones?
Front ones particularly.
Okay.
We can talk.
How's that? Are the clothes?
Let me have another one in there. That's, that's better, yes, that's better, thank you. Okay, my colleagues are just biting at the bit here, so we shall move on, and I'm going to let Commissioner Amirian lead the pack.
Take the, take the mic and proceed.
Alan and Desiree, your house is, is a symphony. It's a symphony of forms, symphony of color, symphony of solids and voids. It is just so beautiful. I had the opportunity to go inside, I don't know who, who else had that opportunity.
I was going to ask you if you had gotten inside the house. I missed it.
Inside is as. Inside is as beautiful as the outside.
Is that right?
And the care that they have shown toward this structure is just, just beyond explaining. I like the house. It's a very, very beautifully kept house. And I don't have any more, more good adjectives.
Adjectives.
Adjectives to say. I am, you know, hey, no English. So I am going to support it wholeheartedly, and I commend you. It's just awesome.
Cita, do you like to say something?
I agree. It's just, it's, it's, just the house itself, it speaks for its beauty, and all the tiny little details that it's just there. All the tile work, all the tiny, everything is so beautiful, like my colleague said, you know. It's just, I will support it, not hundred percent, two hundred percent. Enjoy the house, and I'm sure you will.
I could have said better. I had the opportunity also to visit the property, and I've read by this quite often. I think this is a superb Spanish representation, with its roofline, recessed windows, the turret, the parabolic window. It's got all the elements that fit together well. And I appreciate the fact that the owners opened up the balcony front, because apparently it was enclosed before. And I think that's a great improvement to the house. The iron work, no question about it. I'm ready to make the motion anytime you're telling me to do something.
Everybody's hurrying.
We're going to let you, we're going to let you believe me. I'll just finish up real quick.
Go ahead.
You know, I think this house, what we should be doing, and I'll just pass it on to Jay as a, just as a, off the cuff, we should have every applicant drive by, those that are submitting their applications for the Mills Act, just drive by and see this, and say, this is sort of standard. Whoa. Anyway, it is beautiful. I didn't get a chance to see it inside. I drove by it today, and I was just flabbergasted. And I, I just meant to, I felt like just stopping and going and knocking on the door, but, you know, one of these days I will. I think it's, if it's anywhere inside, the caliber of the style outside, it's just absolutely, it's almost like contemporary design, which, Spanish Revival, it's got so many beautiful points to it. It's just beautiful. The only other thing, the back of the house, I wasn't sure, I was following Jay's comments, but there were some big, big openings in the back. Are those enclosed now, or is that, is that?
This is the current, current condition, yeah.
I mean, the big rectangular openings.
Yeah, there's glass. No, there's glass.
Glassed in. Something else, that's beautiful. Well, I wish we had started you off the agenda with this home.
I agree with you.
We kind of backed into this one, but anyway, do I have a motion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
The question is, would you be willing to get in touch with Glendale Historical Society and offer your home as a tour home? It's very important that our Glendaleians to see these kind of structures.
Absolutely. We will provide before and after pictures, and a list of resources in place, too, because there are a lot of great resources and materials. We would love to share all of our knowledge.
And when you do that, tell Jay so he can make an announcement here at our meetings, I want to go see it too.
You can come on anytime.
Oh.
The chair, you have your right.
Well, just another body.
Got to join the historical society.
Pay your dues.
The backyard, the experience.
You guys should come up to the microphone.
Yeah, the backyard is even.
Yeah, we would welcome any of you that didn't have a chance to come see it, because literally it captures your heart. And it is literally the soul of the 1920s era in the backyard with the wrought iron and the terraces and the caban and the little pool house. When I saw it for the first time, I was just overwhelmed. And my husband was out of town, and I happened to tour an open house like we always do. And I went on and on about this house. And when I told him the price, I said, well, not for us. Like, I'm just saying, you have to see this house. It's one of a kind, you'll never believe it exists in our neighborhood. And as the months went by, the house literally kept coming back to us as we considered to make an offer and then withdrew, and got a call again a month later. But we would welcome anytime, yourselves, anyone else. It's breathtaking in the backyard. I mean, we feel like it's a gift to us just to get to live there.
Beautiful.
Please, knock on the door or call, or help yourself in the backyard. The gates are open.
All right. Appreciate the offer.
We're on TV.
Bring a shovel? What was that?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is attached with the Mills Act. What's the work program on this? I'm just curious. What's the future work plan on this?
This is one of the things that I plan when we have our Mills Act discussion. We have, we haven't been officially requiring a work program. There's a section of the application that has it.
Right.
On a lot of houses where, you know, some houses don't know, it's going to be just routine maintenance or scheduled maintenance over the years.
Okay.
One thought is for us to require a work program that's built into the contract, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Has, Mr. Mardian, I think he has made a motion.
I made a motion earlier, I think, if you want me to. Make a motion to recommend this to city council. Let me read that.
Second.
And attach the Mills Act to it. Do I need to read the whole thing?
I don't know. Did you think it was clear?
It's clear enough, okay.
Okay. Have a second?
I have seconded.
You're checking already?
Wrong.
Roll call.
Commissioner Mardian?
Yes.
Commissioner Amirian?
Yes.
Commissioner Stefanyan?
Yeah.
Chair Adrian?
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
Here.
You're on.
Okay. Item number, we're down to category item number seven, Planning Department Updates and Informational Briefings. Discussion, HPC Requests for Architect Rating System. Something we're doing.
Yes, Chairman.
Oh, yes. Alan?
This discussion item came up during the commission's comments, kind of open comments in your July meeting, which, as it turns out, was your last, most recent meeting. And I believe it was Commissioner Landergan and Commissioner Amirian both at the same time sort of expressed some interest in, is there some way we can rate architects practicing in the city? And that engendered a bit of a conversation with the commission, that since it had not been noticed as that you would be having that commission, we called the timeout and said, let's schedule this so to the extent that you want to discuss it, it's on the agenda, and anybody who wants to tune in or speak on this item would have an opportunity to do so. So that's the reason it's back on the agenda. So we don't have a kind of structure for this conversation, other than to get your commissioners' thoughts, except for really three items to put in front of the commission. The first is that as city policy, we do not recommend any kind of contractors or architects or installers or landscape architects. We, you know, as a city policy, we simply don't have a list or recommendations that we hand out. You know, we refer somebody to Better Business Bureau or License, you know, look at the list of licensed architects or licensed contractors, and that's the extent to which we would recommend any professional who might be doing work with the city. We do from time to time get requests from people who say, can you recommend a contractor? And we have to say, well, unfortunately, no, we can't. The second kind of consideration for the commission is, I believe when this comment came up, the idea was to talk about architects practicing in the city today in any circumstances, and perhaps with an interest towards architects who practice in front of the Design Review Board, and their work is reviewed by Design Review Board. That, of course, is outside of the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission, as your authority applies only to properties on the Glendale Register and properties within designated historic districts. So if your interest is to talk about architects practicing in the city generally, you're somewhat treading on the turf of another commission, namely the Design Review Board. And then the third consideration is a kind of thought as to how this subject might be addressed in a way that is consistent with city policy to not recommend, or not develop a kind of rating system or recommendation list, is a practice that the Design Review Board, both Design Review Boards have had for a number of years. And that is, from time to time, they see projects that are either very good applications, just in the way the material is presented, or projects that they think are very well-designed and well-conceived, and they will make a request that staff save those applications and keep them in a file. We kind of jokingly refer to it as the good book. But there is a file that the DRB is aware we maintain, and projects that the DRB members say this is an exemplary project for one reason or another, they ask staff to keep that on file. So we do have a file of different projects and submissions that have come in front of the Design Review Board, that they have specifically said, we think this is a worthwhile project to use as an example. So that file exists, should anybody care to look at it and take whatever lessons or names they might care to pull from that file, it's available. Not necessarily widely known, but the Design Review Board certainly knows about it. So one possibility is that as the Preservation Commission reaches a point where you are reviewing development or additions or modifications, or even new construction within historic districts, we're seeing the work of particular historic architects as an option for the Historic Commission to also take the liberty of saying, this is a very good project, a very good submission, and should be included in, you know, the book of good examples that are sanctioned as a word by the commission, or recommended by the commission at some point during your hearing. So those are the three comments or thoughts that we have on the subject that came up at the July meeting, and.
Could I ask?
Entertain any comments or further discussion.
Could we ask to save some good examples in a good book, and not so good examples in a not so good book? So we can achieve what we want to achieve here.
There's those ordinances that says, not a good example, good example. Shows pictures.
Pictures, yes.
You know.
That was, that's pretty good, actually. We can refer to the book.
I was going to say, could you even have another book, a separate book, one that would just pertain to historic restoration work?
I think we could. The way the Design Review Board submissions are broken up is there's one, there's a binder that relates simply to single-family projects. I believe we have one that relates to hillsides, and one that relates to commercial, and other that relates to multifamily. So we break them up by those kind of common categories, so we could certainly simply add one that's preservation work.
Could you have that for us to review next meeting? Is it possible? You said you have it.
Yes, actually, it's on the shelf right out here, so you could take a look at it shortly.
I've heard about it a few times, but I've never had the opportunity to see that book and see what, you know.
Perhaps if you, if you all want to come by, just make sure we're here, and we can show you the book, and you can look through it and get an idea. But I think having a historic good book, once the commission gets, you know, some applications coming in where we're looking at significant additions and new construction, I think that would be great for us to have kind of either a separate section or our own book to work with applicants.
Okay. Thank you.
Precisely.
In fact, if I may, it would actually be a good supplement to the design guidelines for the historic districts, because at the time they were written, there were relatively few examples of sensitive, sensitive additions to historic structures. I know the consultants who prepared that really scoured the city to find examples they were willing to support, so we could begin to supplement that with examples as the commission reviews projects.
Is it under our preview, whether, when an application comes in to have photographs of the previous work that the architect or designers have done?
It will be, I don't think we can do that. I'm sorry.
Well, the application procedures for, we're coming to the Historic Preservation Commission, would be the same as what comes in front of the Design Review Board. And we currently don't require that.
Some cities do.
Right.
I don't know how, you know, if that is.
Generally, we'll be working with the architects who the applicants have already retained before they come to us. So our job is to help the architect understand what the guidelines mean and how to get the best design.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, that being said, Mr. Mardian, we don't require applicants to provide effective portfolio of their past work as part of their application, but we do advise them, as they come in front of the Design Review Board and as they come in front of HPC, advise them that examples and photographs of work they've done in the past is very useful for the decision-making body. You know, if they're showing a detail that's, they say Spanish-style detail, you know, the commission may be, well, what do you really mean? And if they can show that they've done three or four different examples and successfully executed that, it certainly gives the review bodies some assurance that this architect, you know, means business and knows what they're doing. So we often recommend, provide precedents and examples of your work and other work that you intend to emulate, if that's.
Thank you. Very nice. Good idea.
I have one other staff update, and then we had one commission update, which we can discuss.
Are we in item eight? You want to supersede number eight?
Let me finish with seven, just very quickly, because it's just a quick and exciting update for you guys to show you 1020 Hillcroft Road, which you recently voted to recommend to the council for designation. And you had said, we love this house, but we do not love the canopy that is over the driveway, so the applicant should remove the canopy before going to council. And just to refresh your memory, there's the canopy. And they did remove the canopy, and I think, you know, this is one of these great minor victories where the result looks so good, and the owners are actually very happy to have more light coming in the living room and to see the front of their house. So it just worked out for everyone, and council designated the house. So this is actually Glendale Register property number 80. So on our count of registered properties, we're up to 80, so.
On the same talking, because this issue we discussed last time, on the roof itself, the material of the roof, because this is wood shake, whether it's fire-treated or not, I'm not sure.
The same question came up at council.
Is there a discussion coming up? How do we deal with this material?
Well, we're going to, you know, bring, if people are bringing in materials that can't be approved at staff level, we're going to be bringing it to the commission. But the goal is, it will now be impossible to put untreated wood, and I've heard there may be some treated wood products out there that meet fire code, but I don't know for sure at this point. But whatever substitute material we're going to use, we're going to make it as good as possible, and if we can't approve it at staff level, we'll bring it to the commission, so.
So, on the same talking, so let's say it comes to our commission, do they have to provide drawings?
You know, on a roof repair, I'm not sure that a drawing is going to really help. They're definitely going to have to bring, we'll have different requirements than for DRB in some cases, especially for repair work rather than, you know, new construction. But, you know, having samples, having good photographs indicating the area of repair, that sort of thing.
Is there any mechanism in, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is there any mechanism that the city has, that we, once we designate these homes, that they have a little bit more of a palette of materials that they can? I mean, I know the code, you know, restricts wood shingles.
Yeah, there's something, state code called the Historical Building Code, that does give some flexibility in decision-making. It wouldn't apply to a wood roof. I don't think for current safety standards in the hillside areas, there's any way we're going to be able to put a wood roof on the house. So what we're going to look for is the best possible replacement, yeah.
Okay.
It's a fire zone, you need to have plastic.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm just thinking.
Well, sprinkler?
Do something to mitigate the thing. Okay, I guess we're on number eight?
Number eight.
Mr. Mardian's pit.
Yeah, I asked for this item through Jay to discuss the possibility of establishing minimum age requirement for Glendale Register designation. I felt it's very important that we have some discussion on whether we should establish a minimum age requirement for these applications, because our, you know, a few of our designations are becoming, you know, you know, recent.
Very current.
Very current. And I just wanted to have the discussion, see how the commission feels about establishing some age limit to these buildings before they apply.
I agree with you, Mr. Mardian. Our commission's name is Historic Preservation Commission. The word historic implies to age.
Right.
We cannot design a building yesterday and come and ask for historic designation. How beautiful that building is. So I agree. I think we should discuss and come up with an age requirement and submit it to the Council for their deliberation, discussion and approval or disapproval.
I felt, the reason I felt discussing this because I, we need to see how these buildings perform over time and the criticism they, you know, acquire, whether it's good or bad, and create some, like I said, sentimental value to this property, you know, and take it from there.
Is there any, any merit to kind of relate the age that we want to, to the demolition requirement?
The, the current demolition ordinance requires us to review any property that's over 30 years old to make sure it's not historically significant. If I can just give a little background, I've checked on some of the local jurisdictions. The most common situation is to not have any kind of age limit for potential nominations. Los Angeles, Pasadena, West Hollywood, most of our kind of neighbors. And I think that's, that's pretty much the trend nationwide. The reality, which I left for each of you, a list of the Glendale Register by age, by construction date. So it's organized differently than we normally keep it. And what I found is that, you know, since 1940, we've only designated six properties that were built after 1940. That tells me that there's a pretty good sense on the part of both staff and the Commission that if someone was coming in with a property that was built in 2007, that we're going to probably have a lot of trouble taking that seriously as a historic resource unless there was some very special aspect about the building and perhaps a threat to it that we wanted to take into consideration. So my, my sense and my recommendation is that we not have an age limit for those very rare potential situations where we might want to have an ordinance that allows us to look at things from the more recent past. But in general preservation thinking, you know, time is just seemingly accelerating so quickly that, you know, 25 years ago is, you know, 1980, 19, you know, 1960 is turning 50. And the LA, Los Angeles Conservancy is celebrating the fact that the 60s are now turning 50. The National Register criteria for age requires 50 years for consideration unless a property has exceptional significance. In general preservation thinking, that's been kind of debunked and a lot of people think it's not the right timeframe. So if you were going to consider a timeframe, I'd recommend it be 20 to 25 or possibly 30 years to be consistent with the demolition ordinance. But just keep in mind that that does limit us in case there was a rare situation where something came in that, you know, may require some kind of protection and may actually be found to be of historic significance by the Commission. And we wouldn't be able to designate something like that in that situation. The reality of what we've had nominated, you know, the, the house that we just looked at, the modern house that council also designated last week on Roar Street, which was built in 1973, is already 36 years old. So even a strikingly modern house that to all of our eyes looks like a very interesting example of modernism in Glendale, already passes the standard that most other cities have, when they have a standard being 30 years. Los Angeles actually doesn't have a requirement and they designated the binoculars at the Chayet Day Headquarters in, in Venice, which were built in 1991, I think, and they were designated in 1997. So there's, you know, in very rare situations, it might be of use to have kind of more liberal requirements, so.
Big mistake.
What's that?
Big mistake. Designating binoculars.
Well, they should have designated the whole building. I agree, but that was a political decision.
But may I just ask you, what would happen if the ordinance contains a wording that, that has a time limit, but also allows either the Historic Preservation Commission or the staff to determine a building is a special case, to discuss that?
Sure, we could do that like the National Register does and have, it's called a criteria consideration, where you find that the property has exceptional significance and then you can break your own rule a little bit.
We can discuss that.
Because, because otherwise, otherwise then you have to be, or the planning department has to be in a position for consistently rejecting certain projects that are built five years ago.
Sure. The, the reality is we don't get those nominations, but you're right. You know, if we started to, it could be a problem.
When people start knowing about Mills Act.
You think the sky is going to fall?
The sky is not going to fall. But my opinion is that we, we should, we should explore the, the, an age limit. And 30 years old is fine. It works with the demolition ordinance. And I think it's fair.
It's a good threshold number to get with, 30 years.
Yeah, I think so. It's to be consistent with our demolition.
And there's always, there's always exceptions. We have exceptions for every rule.
Finding of exceptional.
Sure. There's a extreme exception.
Okay, I'll, I'll report back at our next meeting about the process for us to, to make that amendment and what we'll need to do. If, if indeed you vote for it today.
Yeah, that's, the whole thing is to roll on it today. I think to discuss it and, you know, bring it up.
Yeah, although I'm not sure as a discussion item, if we, we may have to bring it back as a new business item.
If I may suggest, let's bring it back as a kind of draft ordinance language and kind of the process for next, next meeting. And then you could take a vote on whether you want to formally recommend that to the Council.
We'll also share it with the, the two historical societies in town and make sure everyone who's interested in this will have a chance to comment.
Mr. Chair, on this item eight, I have another request. And that is, could we agendize to discuss the colors of historic buildings that we're discussing?
Sure. All right.
Listen, man, it's important.
Putting salt on the one, actually.
Commissioner Amirian, do you have a particular color in mind?
You know, I'm a painter. I like all colors.
Anything in the rainbow.
But not all equally.
If, if, if there is a building that, let's say it is pink and has very pale blue windows, which those colors, those colors were kind of, you know, kind of, no, suddenly they come and they have a totally white building with black mullions. What do we do with that? Do we judge whether we like the color or not? Or we say that, well, historically that building was blue and pink and we like to keep that. So.
Yeah. I think we always have to get our personal opinions off the dais and have a historic, you know, reason for making a decision, so. So yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll look into both ideas that we have here at staff level. I'll see what other cities do and bring back a report for you.
Yeah, let's discuss that.
I think that's a good point because I think you're absolutely, I think you're absolutely right.
We'll get the color squared away.
Colors happen, yeah, consistent with styles.
I'm bringing my brushes with them.
Mr. Chair, one, one more item, one eight. Last time when we didn't have a corum, Mr. Flack, you said we're noticing now when we designate a property? I didn't know that we were noticing the neighborhood.
We have noticed. We're not, we didn't notice for this hearing and we're kind of in flux. We're going to try to be consistent with the ordinance in terms of noticing. There's a general sense that Glendale Register nominations don't have the kind of impact on the broader neighborhood that a historic district or other zoning changes do. So among staff, we're not sure that that's something we would want to see in the ordinance, but we can't just change it without an ordinance revision. So that would be part of a future discussion when we're going to talk about ordinance revisions. And what we just spoke about today may lead to one, so we could bring that in at the same time.
Because the reason I'm saying, because now noticing requires signage, you know.
Yeah, the signage requirement for our noticing, we don't require the big four by eight sign. We just have the clerk post a small notice.
Smaller, that's what I'm saying. Otherwise it's a burden on the, quite a bit.
I have one more question.
One more question.
And that is, I, we have asked in the past some applicants to have a plaque in front of their property saying the building is, did we, are we asking from everyone for, or each time we ask the applicant for it?
That they're asking me before I ask them. Everyone's very excited about the plaque program. So almost, I think without exception, pretty much every nomination that we've had either has a plaque or is in the process of getting one. In the past, we haven't been 100% consistent, but it does seem to be something that's desirable. And it's built into the Mills Act. When someone has the Mills Act, it is a requirement of the program.
Okay.
Yeah, because we discussed the last time we made it sort of mandatory that they will have eventually within their work.
Yeah, I think every, every project or every site that you've approved recently is, is going to have one.
I move to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
All right. I have a, I have a second to move to adjourn?
Mr. Mardian wants to stay a little longer. But he's second.
Am I allowed?
Fifty? You say yes? Okay. Do we need a roll call for this?
No, just.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.